Start the recording, Mayor, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 5:30 PM, and I would like to call to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid Zoom and in-person format. We're located at 1333 Park Avenue in Emeryville, California. Members of the public are encouraged to join us by Zoom, and the link for the Zoom meeting is provided for in today's agenda. There will be opportunities for public comment at the appropriate times on the agenda for this meeting and the subsequent meetings for tonight's agendas. And those who wish to comment on items that are on or off the agenda can do so in one of three manners. If you are here in person, we'll call for oral comment. If you're joining us virtually, we'll call for comment from online commenters. And if you wish to submit a comment card to the city clerk, you may do so using the online comment submittal provided for on the city council's website. So with that, I will ask if the clerk would please take the roll call.
Councilmember Mora.
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Present.
And Mayor Bouders.
Here. Okay, thank you. Members, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders.
Aye. Ex parte communications. Members, there's one action item tonight. It's item 6.1. On that item, there are nine names of people who applied to be considered tonight for the vacancy on the city council. I'm going to ask each member of the council to let me know if they have had an ex parte communication concerning this meeting with any of the applicants. I'll start with Vice Mayor Welch.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Member Mora.
I had a phone conversation with candidate Eugene Swaye on February 6th regarding his interest in the council vacancy and his application. I also had a phone conversation with Sukdeep Kar on January 17th on the same topic.
Okay, Member Pryforce?
Yes, I've had a conversation with Sukdeep Kar and Dr. Eugene Swaye, as well as other candidates like Brooke Westling and Brittany Collins, who eventually declined. I also had email communication with Betsy Cooley, Ed Tanovitz, Verilyn Fullrath, Ann Keen, Gloria Tenceliev, Celeste Burrows, and Julia Clayton. Oh, and yeah, that's it.
And I received the same email communications that were mentioned by Member Pryforce. Okay, we'll move now to public comment for items not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the special meeting's agenda has two minutes to do so. And if you'd like to speak, you can simply approach the podium at this time for a non-agenda item. Madam Clerk, we'll have two minutes, please. Good evening.
Okay, I'm the first person since the pandemic to address this, the Emeryville City Council. And I'd like to direct the people watching television. You can see back there, there's a sign that says, "Emergency Exit Only." That's a new sign. That wasn't here three years ago. We have a new condition now whereby a large swath of our city hall, the People's Hall, has been closed off to the public that used to be open. Okay, so we have a right to know why. Why has our city hall been largely closed off to us? Because remember, when you close off our city hall, that is by degree at least a taking away from our, from your transparency and from your accountability. If we can't see you, we can't hold you to account. And now we can't see you. The entire downstairs is now closed off. We're at two floors we used to be able to go to, the public, and now we can't. So we need a reason why, and it better be a good reason. It can't just be, you know, some public safety unqualified reason. If you're going to say "public safety" or something like that, you're going to have to show us why it's more unsafe now than it was in 2019. And you're going to have to, that's going to have to be factual, and you're going to have to, you know, I'm going to make sure that you are held to account on that. Okay, so two floors of our city hall have been closed off. We can't even go up the front steps of our city council. The traditional entrance, it says "City Hall" above the door, and then the steps going up to it, where the public has traditionally gathered and gone up the steps to redress their government or to, for whatever reason, to interact with their government. That's now all closed off. We've got to go off on some side entrance. Why? You guys better have a good reason. That's all I can say. It better be a good reason, and it can't be capricious. It's got to be rationally based. So I'm going to find out why, and I'm going to tell the people of Emeryville why you've closed off our city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Eugene Swaye. Every weekend, I run in the running area between Point Emory and Chevy's. And every week, I see trash that's on the streets, on the sidewalks, in the minor street areas. And I'd like to just alert the city that that trash doesn't seem to be taken care of on a weekly basis. It's often there for days, perhaps half a week. So I just want to make an alert that that area seems to be targeted for a lot of trash in the streets. So if someone could be alerted to that and take care of that, that would be very nice. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move from public comment on non-agenda items to our action item. So item 6.1 is the city council vacancy, the applicant interviews, and the adoption of a resolution appointing the selected applicant to the vacant city council member seat for a term that expires December 2024. Before we begin this evening's special meeting, I wanted to just go over, for the benefit of the public here and at home, the process that we've taken to now and the process for this evening for the benefit of the applicants and the public. Councilmember, former councilmember Alexandra Medina announced that she would be leaving the city council for personal reasons in December of 2022, and she vacated her seat by notice to the city manager on January 15th, 2023. At the January 17th council meeting, the city council decided to engage in a process to conduct interviews for the potential appointment to fill the vacancy created by her departure. Under the California Government Code, we have 60 days to make those considerations and fill the appointment if we wish. And the city council at the February 7th meeting had a discussion about the interview process. We held the application period open for a period of 15 days, and I want to give special thanks to the city clerk's office for all their work in managing this process and collecting the applicants and answering their information and answering their questions as we navigated this process. The city council agreed unanimously at the last meeting that the interview structure for tonight's meeting will go as follows. Each applicant will receive three minutes to provide an opening statement. The clerk will be managing the clock. When the clock beeps and your time for your three minutes is up, I will ask you to stop talking if you are still talking, but we ask you to just please move to the next item. There are three questions that were pre-approved by the city council. Those questions, if you have not reviewed them, are: Why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council? What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city? And identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city. Each applicant will get two minutes to answer each of those three questions. Upon the conclusion of those six minutes maximum of answering questions, each council member up here has the opportunity to ask one follow-up question of each applicant, for which each applicant will have one minute to answer each follow-up question if asked. So by way of example, if you've answered your three questions and Vice Mayor Welch asks a follow-up based on a statement you've made in the course of one of your answers, you will get one minute of time to provide further explanation or detail in response to that question. Each of us will have the chance to do that for one question with each applicant. If a member does not have a follow-up question, there simply will not be a follow-up question from that member. After those questions have been asked, there will be a one-minute closing statement period where you'll get one additional minute to either speak on something that you wanted more time on, speak on an item that you think that we should hear about that wasn't asked of you, or share an additional perspective of your own prerogative. After we have completed the questions for each of the applicants who are here to answer questions this evening, we will then call for public comment. Members of the public will have the opportunity to provide up to two minutes of comment as to, after they've heard from all the applicants. In doing that, we will begin with people who are in the room. We will take in-person comments first. We will then go to people who are joining us remotely on Zoom. And the clerk has received several written comments submitted through the online speaker card. We will read those last. So if you did submit an online speaker card, but for some reason are now present this evening or you're joining us by Zoom, you will have the chance to give your statement orally instead of having the clerk read it if you would like. After public comment has concluded, we will then move to discussion. And as we discussed at our February 7th meeting, we will go in the order in which we've taken applicants. We will ask each member of the council to provide not more than one minute in brief comments, which can be things that they liked about the candidate, observations they have, questions that have come up for them, our concerns or other considerations. The goal being that we are going to hear from applicants first, the public second, and then each other. After council members have heard all of those components and we've just exchanged our high-level thoughts, there will be a moment of time for council members to gather their thoughts. The clerk is going to approach the podium, and we are going to ask each council member to share their top two choices so that we can see as a starting point whether there is any consensus around a handful of candidates to discuss further. For, and then we'll go from there. We'll have discussion. So for the order of applicants this evening, we wanted it to be randomized. So the clerk has every candidate's name in a hat or a basket, I assume, someplace over there. She will randomly draw a name. When your name is called, it will be your turn to come and answer the questions. After each applicant has been given their question, she will draw the next name and so on. It has been brought to my attention this evening that we have one person who has withdrawn, and we have one person who is, if they're not here, has stated that they will withdraw.
That's correct, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, would you like to state for the record who those people are for the council?
Yes, Cole Albin has withdrawn his application based on the fact that he is not a registered voter in the city of Emeryville. We also received email communication from Brady Goodwin saying that he may not be able to attend, and if he doesn't, his application is rescinded. I don't see him on Zoom at this point, and I don't believe he's in the room.
Is Brady Goodwin here? And I don't see a Brady Goodwin online. If Brady Goodwin's name is called and Brady is not here, we will accept Brady's prior written instruction that he's withdrawn. And then my understanding is that one applicant, Matthew Solomon, is joining us to be interviewed virtually. Is that correct?
That's correct, and he is on Zoom.
Okay. So just before we begin, if applicants, when I call your name, if you would just raise your hand so we can see who is present, in case we have anyone else who didn't show. Brian Donahue is present, Madam Clerk. Sukdeep Kar is present, Madam Clerk. Lindsay Pfeiffer is not yet present. Stephanie Singer is present, Madam Clerk. Matthew Solomon is online, Madam Clerk. Eugene Swaye is present. John Woods. Okay, so I noted Lindsay and John as not being present at this time. There is a John online. If John Woods is joining us virtually, please raise your hand. Okay, there is a Joe San that's raised their hand, so I will accept that as being John Woods. You can lower your hand, Mr. Woods. Maybe that's not Mr. Woods. Okay, all right. So it looks like we have just one other applicant who's missing. Members of the council, are there any questions before we begin the process? Madam Clerk, do you have a clock ready? Okay, so with that, I would like to ask if the clerk would please select the first applicant to be interviewed.
The first name is John Woods.
Okay, John Woods, if you are joining us virtually, please re-raise your hand so the clerk can recognize you. Okay, please, Madam Clerk, promote John Woods to talking privileges on the Zoom meeting. And please, there you go. Is this John Woods?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. And the chambers, can we hear the speaker okay? Yep, okay.
Can you hear me?
We can, John. If you could speak up just a little bit, we can hear you. John, the clerk, when you begin speaking, the clerk will begin the clock. If you'd like to begin with a self-introduction for not more than three minutes.
Sure, sure. I'll try to be brief. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is John Woods. I've been a resident of Emeryville since 2005, when I bought my first residence at Andante Emeryville. Since then, me and my husband have bought two commercial storefronts on San Pablo and an additional residence at Green City Lofts, just nearby. I have witnessed the many changes in Emeryville in all these years, both good and not so good, and hope that I can make a difference on the council. As a person who regularly walks Emeryville from end to end, I see both the potential and the challenges that the city has, from empty storefronts to the homeless, to rising crime, as well as the arrival of Target and the rebirth of the public market following the pandemic. I hope to serve on the council to enable Emeryville to address its challenges and to reach its potential of what I like to call a big, little city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. The first question for you, for a period of two minutes. Please state why you are interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I'm interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council because I want to make a difference in a city that I plan on living in for at least another 18 years. I work and work to come up with ideas for filling the empty storefronts, many of which are near me, of course, on this end of Emeryville, and addressing the affordable housing challenges and the homeless problem.
Thank you. The second question. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city?
So as a non-driver, I bring the perspective to the board that will help promote and further the public transit-friendly reputation of Emeryville for its residents and its small businesses. I also have nonprofit board experience and for-profit experience managing people, organizations, and their corresponding budgets, and making proper trade-offs with respect and empathy. Additionally, as a web technologist and a manager, I think I can lend my expertise, if and where desired, to improving Emeryville's online presence, promotion, and advocacy.
Thank you. Please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so my first priority is helping to address the, again, the crime problem. I think that's happening everywhere in the Bay Area. The place that I live here in Emeryville, we've had numerous robberies of our mailroom and our commercial spaces as well. So one is to help make Emeryville a safer place for residents and businesses, small and large. Number two, or priority number two, with all due respect to Emeryville's emphasis on mixed-use buildings, there are still way too many empty storefronts. So I would focus our efforts on filling those to improve our tax base and address the appearance of blight and neglect. And lastly, my third priority would be, again, around affordable housing. As it is a challenge that's facing all of California and the Bay Area, we are still very much in need of focused efforts in this area, striking a balance to protect what makes Emeryville Emeryville and making or providing affordable solutions for those in need.
Thank you so much for your answers to the questions, John. At this time, we will have council member question follow-ups, and for each applicant, I'll rotate who goes first so that everyone takes a different turn. So for this one, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Welch, do you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Woods?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Member Mora? Member Pryforce?
Yes, I have a question. All right, first, thank you, John, for being a part of this process. No matter what is decided, we appreciate you for just taking the time to want to do more for Emeryville. So thank you. So the question I have is, I recently put up a post on Twitter where I talked about why politicians suck. And so what I came to was that sometimes when we get into power, us politicians, elected officials, we sometimes focus less on the people and more on staying in power. And so the question I have for you is, where does power come from for you? Does it come from the top, or does it come from the people? And how does that connect to your observations as relates to blight, neglect, and those storefronts that you talked about as challenges to Emeryville?
Right, so to me, the power comes from empathy. It comes from a place of empathy in terms of being able to put myself in the shoes of other people, be it homeless people, be it people who are walking around Emeryville like I do, people who are small business people. Again, I have a tenant in my small business space here in Emeryville. My partner also has a small business. So I think it comes from empathy as far as that goes, and being able to always put yourself in other people's shoes. This will be my first sort of take on serving the public in this form, so I don't think I possess any of those attributes that you're describing as a typical politician. Regarding the blight and neglect here, my feeling is that, excuse me, is that Emeryville, I think, is making a lot of strides in this area. But like I said, I think we do have a lot of empty storefronts here. So I think we just need to focus on, again, utilizing those spaces in other ways.
Thank you. My follow-up question for you, Mr. Woods, is you mentioned a couple of times now your interest in eliminating empty storefronts, and I would just like to ask if there is an example of a project in Emeryville that you think is, represents your viewpoint as to what good design in an urban setting is?
Yeah, I think that, I know Emeryville's been trying to do more around the arts for temple, and I think we can take a page from other surrounding communities around empowering artists to utilize some of these spaces and maybe dress them up while they're still vacant. So that would be an example of leveraging some of the artistic endeavors that we're already undertaking. It could be from kids even, as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Woods, you have one minute to provide a following, a follow-up or closing statement, if you'd like.
Sure. Just in closing, I'd say, as I mentioned in my application, since I, since my first visit to Emeryville, I actually started at the public market, attending a seminar there over 25 years ago. To my recent visit to Emeryville, I'm sorry, to Arizmendi and other places here in Emeryville, I've enjoyed living and working from home in Emeryville and would be honored to serve on the council in furtherance of improving public safety, focusing on affordable housing, and keep, and having, and helping fill, again, the empty storefronts with thriving businesses. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you so much for taking the time to apply, taking the time to apply and joining us this evening. We will move you back to the attendee section of the Zoom meeting, and I will ask the clerk to randomly select a second person to be interviewed, please.
The next person is Brady Goodwin.
Has Brady Goodwin joined this meeting? Okay, Brady Goodwin is not present, and per the email we received earlier from Brady Goodwin, if they were not present, they were withdrawing. So Brady Goodwin is now withdrawn. Please call another name, Madam Clerk.
The next name selected is Sukdeep Kar.
Okay, Sukdeep Kar. Good evening. Could you lower the microphone a little so that the people at home can hear you?
I will. May I?
You may do that, yeah, of course. Okay, Ms. Kar, welcome and thank you for your application. The first question, for three minutes, why are you, I'm sorry, is just your self-introduction, sorry.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, good evening. I'm here today on the encouragement and support of the voters in the city of Emeryville. Emeryville is my home since 2008. Initially, I chose to live in Emeryville for the easy commute to San Francisco, where I accepted an associate attorney position. Am I okay in the sound? Okay. Fifteen years later, I'm still here because of my love for the city and its community. Now I work from home in the Watergate community of Emeryville, and I'm proud to live here. The time saved in commute has motivated and empowered me to contribute to the collective welfare of our city. As you know, I was a candidate in the recent election for city council. It was a privilege to run with a qualified pool of candidates. It takes a lot of commitment and dedication to fully see the process through. While dedicating the time, resources, and efforts as a candidate in the election, I developed a deeper respect for the election process of representative government and those who are fully committed to it. As a candidate, I had the invaluable opportunity to get to know the city at a much deeper level, and I used this opportunity to engage with the voters and explore ideas for a better city. I knocked on as many doors as I could, and I talked to as many voters as I could. I spent time meeting with small business owners in our city to understand their concerns. I reread our general plan, our climate action plan, our vision for the city. I explored ideas and solutions with other elected officials in the Bay Area and Central Valley, many of whom gave me their endorsements. I was informed by many of these elected officials that owing to the leadership in our city, Emeryville is regarded as a model city in the region. I educated myself on our local and regional issues by attending seminars on housing, transportation, climate change, and building safer and vibrant communities. This education and engagement in exploring ideas and solutions that will benefit our city prepares me with a better perspective to make inclusive and informed decisions should I be appointed to the city council. I'm excited to keep working towards our city's progress. It will be an honor to represent our city with its diverse orientations, all ages, cultures, backgrounds, and professions, including retirees, families raising their children, people who love their pets, people who create art. I'm committed to smart growth and improved quality of life while maintaining Emeryville's unique character of city known for art and innovation. Council, I seek your vote in representing our community's collective concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. The first question of the three questions. Why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council? Two minutes.
Thank you for the question. I've always enjoyed helping people and exploring ideas and solutions for sustainability. Being on the city council gives me a platform at the local level to promote and support meaningful solutions to address issues like climate change, transportation, public safety, land use, in a way that will improve the quality of our lives. Being on the city council enables me to be a part of a team dedicated to working for our collective benefit. Our city is unique because the members of the city council are clearly not in it for the pay. Most of you hold full-time jobs, and if you're a single mother, it's a third or a second or third job for you. Yet all of you have enough passion for public service to take the time for a very demanding second or third job of serving as a city. You are willing to dedicate yourself and find time to address the issues and concerns of our city. You have the heart for public service and community development. It would be an honor to share and contribute to your perspectives for good governance. I'm interested in serving on the city council for two reasons. One, the position would give me a platform to find and implement solutions to address issues like climate change, transportation, public safety, land use in a way that will improve the quality of our lives. And two, it will be an honor to work for the collective benefit fit for our model city known for art and innovation with a group of representatives dedicated to public service. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question. What unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city? Two minutes.
Thank you for the question. I possess the unique experiences and strengths of living in multiple places, adapting to different cultures and languages every two years, until I immigrated to the United States in the early 90s. I'm a combination of an immigrant, a woman, a person of color, with an interesting-sounding name, all of which have presented challenges in some form or another at some point or another, and have contributed to making me who I am. A resilient, dependable individual, deeply rooted in my values to offer an independent perspective while respecting and being inclusive of other perspectives and opinions. Owing to my values, upbringing, and dedicated hard work, I put myself through law school. Today, my clients trust me with cases involving millions of dollars. As an attorney, I have advised governmental and quasi-governmental bodies and multinational organizations. I have raised funds for nonprofits and founded a nonprofit. I'm a member of City Parks Alliance and San Francisco Bay Area Planning Urban and Research Association. I'm a member of the Climate Initiative Board to help achieve a corporation's net-zero goals. Last year, I dedicated time and effort and resources to campaign for city council elections and won endorsements of many elected officials in the Bay Area and Central Valley and community members of all party affiliations. I will contribute my values of community service, integrity... I will contribute my values of community service, integrity, respect for all perspectives, dedicated work ethic, ability to make informed and inclusive decisions to the benefit of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The third question, please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city. Two minutes.
Thank you for the question. One priority is the reforestation of our city to combat climate change and rising sea levels and cultivate and preserve biodiversity. I would prioritize planting the 5,000 trees that our city needs. Another priority is the implementation of active transportation plan that ensures safety, equity, comfort, and connectivity. I would also prioritize family-friendly ownership housing built in an environmentally conscious way which goes hand-in-hand with obtaining a pro-housing designation. I would like to see Emeryville continue being a model city, not just in the region, but nationally and internationally.
Thank you. Members, now is the time for follow-up questions of one-minute responses each. Is it just my microphone that's doing that?
Mine is too.
Oh, it might be that one, actually. Okay. I'll start this round. Member Moore, do you have any follow-up questions for applicant Kar?
Yes. Could you elaborate or walk me through where you see in new housing or development opportunity for sustainability?
Yes, I can definitely do that. I think I read somewhere in one of the regional newspapers that there is 20% or 21% of commercial buildings that are either vacant or not fully occupied. I think we could explore some opportunities to repurpose some commercial stock into residential stock in a way that would be sustainable, perhaps get those equipped with the lower energy or solar even. So that would be one of the ideas which I think would be worth exploring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pryforce.
Hi.
Is your mic on?
There you go. All right. So I've had the honor and privilege to be a part of a campaign that included running, I guess they say against, but I don't think that that was the kind of campaign that any of us ran. And I appreciate who you are and your conduct. And yeah, but something interesting also happened during the whole candidate race for all of us, which was that when Mayor Bowders, when he sent out an email that wherein he endorsed my colleague, Councilmember Mora, then candidate Mora, he mentioned you that he would be voting for you. And then later on, I think closer to the end of the election, he sent out a second email, and that second email didn't include you. If it did, there's a good chance that you would be here with us. Where does power come from? Does it come from the top, or does it come from the people?
Where does power come from? It comes from within the person's self, and I think that is the only way I would approach it. You'd have to have your own power and eliminate the noise around you in order to motivate and move people towards your ideas. And I think everyone here, every single person, has that power. And I think that you all give your power to the people and represent the people.
Thank you. I'm next in the rotation for this round. And my question is, you spoke about reforestation and 5,000 trees. You listed that as your number-one policy goal or objective. What makes that your first choice? What about that is, why did you choose that first?
It is one of the priorities, not necessarily in that order, but it is a priority because climate change is an international emergency. I think we can do something on the local level and make a difference. The city has been a model city at so many levels, and I think we can be a model city at that level, too, given the issues of an earthquake, which was a huge disaster. I would, we live with rising sea levels. The Emery Point was just recently bolstered because parts of it were going into the bay. At least that's what my understanding is. But things like that. I live on a landfill, and every earthquake that comes to the city is an earthquake that leaves seismic structural damages in the roads near where I live. So that's the reason why it's one of my priorities.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Walsh, do you have a question?
Could you identify, in your opinion, an opportunity for growth in Emeryville's sustainability plans? Maybe something that you feel like maybe could have been done better?
I think we have a great climate action plan, a good sustainability plan. There is, there are opportunities like the trees. We had to cut down some trees that were falling off during the storms, and I would be excited to see that they be planted. That would make the environment more sustainable. It would create job opportunities. So I think that would bring in equity, economy, and it would also stimulate the environment in a positive way. So sustainability involves all three elements, and I think that's an opportunity for us to go in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have one minute to provide a closing statement, if you'd like to.
Yes, I would very much like to, and I hope I can do it in one minute. I would like to thank my father for encouraging me to fill out all the paperwork in Manual Two, which seemed so tedious that I almost didn't file my nomination paper for the election. I am grateful to my mom for being my biggest fundraiser and finance committee. I want to thank my brother for his generous contribution and for helping me with my website despite having a full-time job and family obligations. I'm thankful to my sister for coming all the way from Sacramento on her birthday to campaign for me. I thank my uncle, Harpreet Sandhu, who's here today, former councilmember of Richmond, for his tremendous support and guidance throughout the process. I'm grateful to all of you at home and in the community who endorsed me, who voted for me, and who supported me through the process. Because of all of you, I am fully committed to the process and stand here today to seek an appointment to the council seat. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and for your application.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please draw the next applicant?
The next one is Lindsay Pfeiffer.
Lindsay Pfeiffer is the one person who we had not heard from, correct?
I did not hear from her, no.
Okay, Lindsay Pfeiffer here or online, please raise your hand. Okay, members, there is no interview for Lindsay Pfeiffer this evening. Madam Clerk, please draw the next name.
The next name is Eugene Sway.
Okay, Mr. Sway, welcome. Mr. Sway, you have three minutes to provide an opening statement.
Good evening, Emeryville City Council, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Eugene Sway. I'm a 34-year resident of Emeryville. My three children attended Emeryville schools. I was the 2007 and 2008 parent-teacher president of Emory High, one of the founding members of Emeryville Community Organic Garden, a member of the Watergate Finance Committee, which presides over 25% of Emeryville's population. I have a PhD in architecture and education from UC Berkeley and attended Columbia University. I was the 2011 and 2012 research scholar at Harvard University. I taught locally at UC Berkeley, San Francisco State, and San Francisco Institute of Architecture. I've designed two 50,000-person cities in central and southern China for indigenous ethnic minorities. I've published 12 international books and portfolios on architecture, ecology, and human behavioral change. I'm the subject of three documentary films and many international television programs since the 1990s. I'm an international professor at universities in USA and China since 1999, and I've been employed by the Bay Area Open Space Council to create the 20-year plan for developing the growth of the SF Bay Area in terms of population, traffic, sewage capacity, land conservation, building development, and city expansion. I co-founded the International Safe Drinking Water Alliance and the International Low-Carbon Energy Forum. I have 38 years of professional international experience in architecture and city planning. And you probably know that I'm the eight-time World Amateur Boxing Champion and four-time Senior Olympic Gymnastics All-Around Champion, and eight-time U.S. Presidential Sports Award winner conferred by U.S. Presidents Bill Clinton and George W. Bush. An exhibition of my architecture and city planning work at the New York Museum of Modern Art begins September of this year. My overarching life concern is how do we bring meaning, purpose, and the reach for excellence in our lives and in the lives of the community while exemplifying compassion, authenticity, moral dignity, and originality? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. You have three questions with two minutes each to reply. The first question is, why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council?
I want to serve because I'm convinced local policies need to change for our community to flourish. For example, we need to create a series of symposiums for our citizens to discuss crime and safety with the police department and a code of ethics with our government. Currently, there does not exist a government code of ethics or an organized citizen-police dialogue. City council responsibility is to provide the utmost civility and courtesy to all citizens at all times and to be easily available to the public and provide the best policing, fire protection, courts, waste removal, parks, biking, street sidewalk beautification, family counseling, fitness programs, and school education for our city. We need to repair our potholed roads, implement daily street garbage cleanup, repair our floundering school system, provide family counseling and psychological exam services, develop intergenerational social activities, education, and fitness and diet programs that turn obesity, poverty, apathy, and disinterest into creative challenge and civic pride.
Thank you. The second question is, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city?
My Asian ethnicity makes me a voice for the 33% of Emeryville's population who are invisible. I speak fluent Mandarin, the second-most spoken language in Emeryville. I know many elite Chinese investors and real estate developers here and in China who would happily contribute to Emeryville's future development in major ways. I'm an architect, a contractor, a city planner, so I speak the language of development to create safer, cheaper, more imaginative housing that could have been built in Emeryville but wasn't. If we had used innovative concepts and materials, those housing projects just might exist today. I've designed two cities and have been involved in countless discussions by residents and government leaders. After 34 years here, I know the concerns of the populace, and my strong background in sports, health, climate change, and engineering sciences gives me the ability to implement unique solutions to the climate change crisis we all face and help us prepare for life-threatening dangers that are coming. We should be practicing emergency evacuation of the city in the event of natural disasters for all citizens. My strength lies in my ability to mobilize people, to act according to moral imperative, and to do what's right to address the health and imagination of people and the city.
Thank you. The third question, please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city.
My three policy priorities are, number one, create a resident voices must-be-heard policy. We need the population to speak up. Do you have an idea what can be done to implement it? People are taking the city for granted. We must listen to other people's problems and create a place to help people talk about their painful points. People need to realize their voices are being heard. And number two, implement a health, fitness, ecology policy. Walking, running, and biking is the best way to get around in our city. Could we connect Powell Street Plaza and Bay Street Mall into a walking plaza with no cars? See the city as a laboratory for urban evolution. Eliminate grass in favor of native planting and pollinators, reducing water consumption by 33% the first year. Plant trees on all streets of Emeryville, creating a sense of neighborhood and belonging. Get people involved to strengthen social democracy, physical fitness, and optimal health goals. Garbage, recyclables, and street pavement damage alerts could be exchanged for bus and bar tokens, student laptops, or food. And three, create a small-business incubator policy. Support small businesses by creating an incubator program where, for the first three years, the city will subsidize the business in some way to attract new ideas and businesses and create internship, externship programs for Emeryville high school students, to create a school and business development program. Push for the spirit of Emeryville as an urban laboratory that ignites new ideas and experimentation.
Thank you. Members, we'll now go to follow-up questions. Member Pryforce, you're first this round. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes. So first, Eugene Sway, thank you for your courage along the campaign trail. It was an honor to be on that campaign trail with you, my colleague, Councilmember Mora, and so many others, including fellow applicant Sukdeep Kar. So, and I also appreciate your ecotopia vision for Emeryville. We're not there yet, and hopefully we'll get there. But in the past, there have been conflicts that have been reported between you and members of the city council. One such comment that I experienced on the campaign trail from residents was you pointing towards collusion as relates to the city council. I'll address it a little later on after we wrap up with it, but my concern is over public trust as relates to the city council. How do we do that when the city council is being accused of collusion? So the question I have for you, given that light, where does power come from? From the top or from the people?
I think it comes from the integrity of individuals. It comes from their aspirations, and it comes from the mutual benefit that can be given to all of us from an idea. I think it comes from the belief that you can achieve something. It comes from the aspiration of that belief. And so that belief carries the momentum of power. And it comes from a single vision that carries with it other people. And that vision, I think, is where the power lies.
Thank you. I'm next in the questions.
Yes.
So you mentioned earlier in your comments, you talked about citizen-police dialogues and codes of ethics.
Yes.
So I wanted to ask you on the code of ethics, do you believe, if we were developing a hypothetical code of ethics for the city, do you believe that a person who has been found civilly or criminally liable for violating a code of ethics, such as a state code of ethics, a local code of ethics, the FPPC code of ethics? If a person is found responsible for that civilly or criminally, do you think that our code of ethics should prohibit us from appointing them to committees and commissions?
I think that has to be done on a person-by-person basis, a case-by-case basis. I think we need to look thoroughly into what is the situation with that one person and to make decisions based on these particular characteristics of that case. So I think that a general policy, I'm not so much in favor of that. I'm more in favor of a case-by-case examination and discussion about the nature of that particular person or case.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Walsh, you're next.
Mr. Sway, you spoke about family therapy. Is that something you would like to see the city offer, or would that be something available through the school district, perhaps?
I think it should be both. I think that... I think that family counseling is extremely important, and it's something that's very neglected in our city and in other cities. And it helps the state of families. It helps the state of children, of parents. And you know, as a parent, and myself as a parent, many of us are parents, that we need help, that we need to talk about the things that trouble us on a day-by-day basis. And to have such counseling services available for people and supported by the city would be a tremendous boon for our city as a, our relationship with families and children and adults in the city. I think it's something that's direly needed, and it's something that we should initiate quickly.
No, just, we're done. Yep. Member Mora.
You mentioned housing projects that did not materialize but may have had innovative materials or methods, if those were employed. Could you elaborate on which project or projects you're referring to and then what those materials and methods would have been?
Yes. Well, I can tell, I can print out or point out one that didn't get built recently, the Anchor Club Nine apartment buildings that was, I think, 118 units. And much of the reason that didn't get built was because it blocked all of the Anchor Club people from Watergate. Now, if that real estate developer had thought about a cofferdam situation where the building was not more than one story high but went underground and with a cofferdam system so that sunlight could hit the lower floors of the building, then you could have a win-win situation where you can build the building, have 118 units, and not block any of Anchor Club's Watergate residents. So it would take innovation and a bit of extra money, but it could be done. And we could have that project, and the realtor would be happy, the people would be happy, and that would be a win-win project for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the follow-up questions. You have one minute if you'd like to give a closing statement.
I want to be a member of the city council because I can no longer live here as a silent observer. We must hold ourselves accountable to moral excellence, empathy, and conspicuous imagination. I bring international experience to act locally to improve health, fitness, housing, businesses, education, and social engagement. I support Measure C and Measure O, maintaining housing affordability and the equality of life, and increase sales tax of real estate. I support the labor standards set by Emeryville voters and the housing needs allocation for resident affordability. I have proven ideas for creating a very large park and building housing that is less expensive, safer, and will not block views. I have innovative concepts to address sea level rise and climate change dangers. Let's make Emeryville an innovative urban laboratory to reinvent a future of empathy, moral integrity, and striking originality. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your application and for coming and taking our questions this evening. April, we will please select our next applicant.
The next applicant is Matthew Solomon.
Okay, and Matthew is joining us virtually. Matthew, if you'd please raise your hand online so April can promote you. Do a mic check. Matthew, could you speak so we can hear you?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you so much for joining us this evening, Matthew. Matthew, you have three minutes to do an applicant self-introduction when you hear the clock stop. That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bauders, and Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council. My name is Matthew Solomon, and I have lived with my partner in Emeryville for more than three years. Professionally, I work as an analyst and researcher at a think tank focused on climate change, and specifically the intersection of climate, finance, and international development. I work on topics ranging from quantitative tracking of money spent on climate change to policies cities can implement to reduce emissions, especially from buildings. Since moving to Emeryville, I have spent countless hours exploring the city on foot and by bike, tuning into city council and planning commission meetings, and learning about all of the great things the city is doing to become more sustainable and livable. Upon moving here, a few things immediately struck me about the city, especially after years of living in San Francisco. First is that's a small city. I think at this point, I've walked on every street, and it was possible to quickly identify the major infrastructure and housing priorities and opportunities. Second is that it's a city in transition, from its industrial history to its present and future as a progressive, dense, green, family-friendly, and sustainable place to live. Finally, the city governance is rational. Everyone involved is smart, friendly, and focused on how to make the city a better place to live. From what I can tell, this isn't a phony commitment to stability, and it's not just for show, but it does allow the council and staff to be thoughtful, prepared, and actually spend time on the substance of issues. But with these thoughts in mind, I look for ways to get involved. And about two years ago, I decided to join the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and have served as chair for the last eight months. Due to my day job, I know well the necessity for increasing sustainable transportation options, and I thought that BPAC was the best place to start to learn more. It's been an amazing learning experience, especially from the rest of the committee members and the incredible city staff who are smart, dedicated, and care deeply about active transportation in Emeryville. Our biggest effort over the last year has been developing the new Active Transportation Plan, which envisions a city where folks of all ages can easily get around safely, comfortably, and even joyfully. I also committed to broadening my understanding of Emeryville's plans for the future outside of just active transportation. This includes attending city council, planning commission, and transportation committee meetings, reading up on Emeryville's plans for the future and the general plan and housing element, and identifying what advocates in the area are prioritizing. In addition, I started to learn about the works of regional entities like ACTC and East Bay Community Energy. I would be honored to represent my community and think I have a lot to offer the city, and promise to be a dedicated, prepared, and thoughtful council member.
Thank you, Matthew. The first question, which has a two-minute response time, why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council?
So there are three reasons I want to serve on city council. First is to continue the city's great work on housing and transportation. Second is to connect more with my community. And then third is to directly impact that community. So first, I want to serve on the city council to continue to further the city's excellent progress on housing and transportation. This includes building affordable housings in the future on the San Pablo lots and Christie sites, and making our streets safer, as example, starting on 40th Street and hopefully San Pablo Avenue soon. And a few roles in my life make these goals really near and dear to me. First is that I'm a renter. Second, I work in an environmental nonprofit and care deeply about sustainability. And then third, I hope to raise a family in Emeryville soon. The second, I see this as a great opportunity to connect more with my community, both through the plans and the wonky policy details, but also to hear what my neighbors are excited about and want for their future. I'm eager to work with the rest of the city council, city staff, and the city advisory committees and the larger community. And then finally, I'm passionate about how city council decisions are reflected on the day-to-day experience of myself and my community. It's a small enough place that I know every decision makes a tangible difference in people's day-to-day lives. For example, I want to live in a city where I can raise a family and we feel comfortable crossing the street, moving around the city without a car. And I hope to be able to use my time as a city council member to be able to continue to make Emeryville a lovely place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city?
I think several of my roles give me unique strengths to benefit the city. First, as an invested citizen. Second, as a BPAC member and chair. And then third, as a professional working on climate finance. These would enable me to be the type of council member that I think the city needs right now, one who can continue to support the transition to a more sustainable city. So going through these one by one, first, over the last few years, as I mentioned, I've invested time and energy in understanding Emeryville's challenges and their strategies for addressing them. As mentioned before, this includes reading the city's plans, attending relevant city meetings, and engaging with regional policies. Second, I've been on BPAC for the last two years, through which I've gotten exposure to how the city operates, how to set priorities given limited resources, and how to work with others in the community and external partners to achieve our goals. And then finally, at my day job, I've developed expertise in thinking about barriers to expanding climate investment and the role of different actors, including importantly, cities. My job is to synthesize information from a variety of sources, including written documents and people I talk to, convening people with different backgrounds and opinions, and then clearly communicating my thinking to others. I think Emeryville is on the right path to tackling its challenges, and the focus now should be on implementing the plans that we have. Given this, I think that the three roles I outlined strongly align with the needs of the city council. To add someone who will be dedicated to the city, who will be well-prepared, and who will think about the important details.
Last question is, please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city.
My approach as council member, as I mentioned, would be to continue the great work that is being done and focus on implementing the policies and plans that we have already. With that in mind, my top objectives for the city are to focus on transportation, housing, and furthering the city's climate goals. So for transportation, I want to implement the Safe Streets programs and the Active Transportation Plan, starting and prioritizing those on San Pablo Avenue, 40th Street, and along Powell Street and Christie Avenue. We've shown through the Doyle Street redesign and the South Bay Front Bridge that these projects are very well-used and even loved. I know that mass transit operators like AC Transit and Emery Go- Round are not directly under the city's purview, but I would want to work with them to make sure that service remains consistent for Emeryville residents. So second, for housing, I want to continue the city's pro-housing approach outlined in the housing element, especially when it comes to affordable housing projects. This includes the hundreds of units currently in the pipeline, as well as those that might arise in the future. Right now, that means ensuring our Measure C funds are spent effectively and that staff has the support and direction they need to work with developers, to apply for grants from the city, excuse me, from the county and from the state, and then also to think a little bit outside the box. And then finally, I want to prioritize addressing climate change. This includes working with East Bay Community Energy to transition to zero-carbon sources of electricity, as the council voted on a few months ago, and also implementing programs like electric car and bike rebate. We also need to prepare for a change in climate. This includes planting more trees, working with partnering cities on maintaining cooling centers for those dangerously hot days, and also using our brand as a biotech hub to bring in the companies of the future, including climate technology companies. And it will be important to communicate these successes to the community. People need to know all of the amazing things the city is doing on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the preset questions for the one-minute responses that follow for the follow-up questions. I'm first this round. Matthew, you're the chair of the BPAC Committee. Thank you for your service to the city. My question is, can you identify or name a project related to transportation in the city that the city is working on, which you think is an example of something we're doing well? And/or would you like to share an example of something you think we're not doing well that we should do better?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I think, I guess I'll answer, I think, an important one that is in the works, and that's the Emeryville Loop, which I think is still in early planning stages, but I think shows the kind of innovative thinking that the city staff is clearly empowered to do by the city council, and solves a problem at the Powell and Christie intersection that BPAC has been talking about for years, that is the most dangerous intersection in the city, both in terms of accidents and also just general feeling of a lack of safety. And I think that that has the opportunity to make things easier for pedestrians, for cyclists, and also for mass transit, and frankly, for drivers, by making it a little bit easier to get around the city. So I think that that's a project that, you know, we clearly haven't implemented yet, is probably a few years away from actually having shovels in the ground, but I think shows the kind of thinking that Emeryville is enabled to do that is really exciting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch.
You can pass on me because you asked my question.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Mora.
Thank you for identifying the aspects of the Active Transportation Plan you're most excited for. Are there any, and you mentioned also that some of those things are years away, are there any opportunities that you might consider more low-hanging fruit that you think could be implemented more quickly?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that, you know, we just got an update last week on the new paving plan, which is not the sexiest topic, but it's really important. And one of the things that Public Works was talking about is the stretch between I-80 and the Marina. And, you know, we've gotten complaints and heard from the community that the sidewalk is too narrow to fit both pedestrians and cyclists. And cyclists can't cycle in the road because their car is going very quickly. And so I think that's an opportunity where we can work with the community to figure out what the balance should be between space for cyclists, space for pedestrians, and space for cars, and work with them to enable people to move along the Marina more safely, to enable Watergate residents to, you know, access the park more easily and access the city more easily, and then also just make it so that it's a solution that works for the future of the city.
Thank you.
Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Matthew, for, Matthew Solomon, for being a part of this process. So in an answer to a question, you mentioned innovative thinking. And my background in tech and product development is, one of the reasons why we push for diversity, equity, and inclusion in companies is, it's not just to have more black and brown faces, but to have different people with different experiences being able to add to a better product. And so, given your BPAC background, given that there, you know, that you are on these committees, that my colleague, Councilmember Mora, came from the Planning Commission, I believe Mayor Bauders also came from the Planning Commission, the person who you will be replacing also came out of the Planning Commission, that diversity, equity, and inclusion isn't just about skin color or what neighborhood you grew up, but it's also about ideas and what ideas you bring to the table. And for, to reflect the diversity in Emeryville, having your background, and I noticed that many of the questions that were asked were specific to your background, as it relates to your seat on the committee, for me, it would make a lot more sense to have somebody who, on the council, who perhaps wouldn't be perceived as an insider by the public. And so the question I ask for you, given that light, where does power come from? From the top or from the people?
Thank you, councilmember. So I guess I would say that I think that, you know, Emeryville is a small place, which means that, you know, each of its citizens has an outright voice, or an outsized voice to make change. And I think that the committees are great ways to do that. You know, clearly, if, I can understand a world where, you know, someone is such an insider because they've been on these committees for so long, but I think, you know, I would encourage all residents to participate. I think that that's the best way to make your voice heard. It is a formal process by which, you know, the city will listen to people who spend their time and devote their time to doing that. So I think that, you know, clearly, the engagement that we see from Emeryville residents on those kinds of committees is very heartwarming, is the word that comes to mind, and is inspiring. And I think it's definitely, it's given me an opening to understand Emeryville's challenges better.
Thank you. Matt, if you would like, you have one minute to provide a closing statement.
Thanks, Mayor Bauders. So I'll just say, I appreciate you all taking the opportunity, and I want to reiterate that I would be honored to represent my community and work with the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council members, and the city staff to continue the excellent work the city's doing to make Emeryville a really wonderful place to live. So thank you for your time, and I wish you best.
Thank you, Matthew. April, we can demote Matthew from the speaking platform, please, and then, we have two applicants left, so if you draw the next one, that'd be great.
The next name is actually in here is Cole Albon, and he's the one who withdrew his application.
Thank you.
Next name is Brian Donahue.
Okay. Mr. Donahue, welcome. You have three minutes to give yourself an opening self-introduction.
Yeah, my name is Brian Donahue. I'm reading from my pre-written text. I've lived in Emeryville for 42 years, and for 13 years, I've been the editor of the Emeryville Tattler, an online news source reporting on Emeryville politics. My wife and my 17-year-old daughter live together here in our home. My wife and my 17-year-old daughter live together here in our home that we've owned for 32 years. That ownership status has provided us with the kind of stability that families need to thrive. Because we paid a mortgage, we never experienced any surprise and debilitating rent increases over 30 years. And now that our mortgage is paid off, we can provide our daughters' well-being, and my wife and I can live comfortably in our retirement without worry of a rent increase, all on a blue-collar earners' income. It's because of, that's all because of ownership housing. This is how community stability is built. It can't be done by transforming Emeryville into a city of renters. Unfortunately, Emeryville no longer builds ownership housing despite the general plan's clear direction to do so, and renters are left at the tender mercies of distant and rapacious corporate landlords who are not interested in our Emeryville community, who instead care about increasing profits. The result is a city with the lowest number of families per capita in the entire East Bay. That's us. Shocking? Yes. But this is not an accident. Ownership housing is not being built because communities, developers can make more money building apartment towers in this economy, rental apartment towers. Our city council majority works in the interest of developers, not in the interest of ordinary citizens. As a result, middle-class newcomers are being shut out of town, or they're renting and being preyed upon by giant real estate corporations, all with the blessing of this council majority. Two out of the four council members are corporate-backed, John Bouders and Courtney Welch. These two council members are supported by YIMBY, a developer-funded lobbying organization that wants to build lots of market-rate housing, but not condos, only rental housing they want to build. On our city council, I would listen to the corporate developer, I would not listen to the corporate developer lobbying organizations such as YIMBY. Rather, I would be a voice for average people. I would leverage our enviable geographic Central Bay location to pressure developers to build us not only ownership housing, but also acres of parks that our general plan calls for, that the corporate real estate developers and their Emeryville proxies, Mr. Bouders and Ms. Welch, have precluded. I would return Emeryville to the foregone days.
Thank you, that's your time.
Okay.
Okay, the first question that you have is, for two minutes, why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council?
The Emeryville City Council majority has thrown their lot in with this out-of-state-funded developers lobbying organization known as YIMBY. That organization is building its power base in cities around the Bay Area, and they seek to makeover municipalities into government entities that exist to maximize developers' profits by maximizing the building of market-rate rental apartment towers. And you know that the people are not in control when they can't even get a simple thing done like increasing the amount of ownership housing over rental apartments, as our general plan calls for us to do. I seek to leverage my position on the Emeryville City Council to form coalitions with residents, citizens, and willing small businesses to end the corporate makeover for our town that the mayor and the vice mayor have effectuated. The people of Emeryville want parks. How do we know that? Because it's in our democratically-vetted general plan. Emeryville is the worst city in the Bay Area for parks. Our mayor recently announced he would not bring more parks until developers have built some undisclosed amount of new market-rate rental apartments. This is a cynical way of governing, in my view. We do have to build parks because that's what the people want. We need to make developers pay for the new parks because, as our general plan says, they are the ones driving the need for new parks, all by the new people they're bringing to our town.
Okay, the next question is, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city?
Because I've lived in Emeryville for 42 years, I know a lot about how this city works and how it doesn't work. I know, for instance, that our, quote, "family-friendly" housing guidelines are an abject failure. While it's true we build more building units of what the housing, or what the city defines as family-friendly, a closer look reveals that we are actually not, we're not friendly to actual families. We know that, because the number, we know that because the number of people per housing unit in Emeryville, 1.8, is by far lower than any city in the East Bay and has been stuck at that number for almost 20 years. That number makes us the worst city in the East Bay for families. Calling it more family-friendly because we've built more units that don't attract families is just so much government propaganda. We need to do better. It starts with saying no to the YIMBY model of government deregulation. Developers won't build the kind of housing we need to attract families, so we need to regulate the private sector more, something this council majority, beholden to YIMBY, refuses to do. My daughter attended Emeryville schools for eight years, and I know that that district is very poorly run. We need to use our influence to force change at the school district, because Emeryville is partnered with Emory School District, and because ethically, we can't wash our hands of our responsibilities to do right by our children, Emeryville needs to intervene and drive reform there. We need to exercise our option as partners to break up the ossified dysfunctional culture at the Emery Unified School District.
Okay, and the third question is, please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city.
My top three priorities would be, one, build more parks. Two, build more ownership housing. Three, build a more democratic, accountable, and transparent city council. Having spoken already about the first two, I'll say that the third priority is also critical. Our council, for years, a body of unity, has descended of late into accusatory and ugly ad hominem attacks against citizens who offer criticism, such as me, and against even our new independently-minded council member Pryforce. I've seen it. I would use my voice in the council to push back against this new and ugly culture at City Hall, and specifically, I would try for a censure against Councilmember Welch, specifically, who publicly called me a "member of the public," a homophobic slur. She called me a fuckboy publicly. This is beyond the pale. It has no place in any government agency comprised of public servants charged with democratic engagement and inclusion. We have much to change the culture at City Hall to replace the hostility with tolerance to new ideas and a sense, a true sense of public service.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go to follow-up questions. The first person on the list this round is Vice Mayor Welch. Do you have a follow-up question?
Mr. Donahue, what's your favorite park in Emeryville?
My favorite park?
Yes.
I guess I'd have to say Doyle Hollis. That park was made by, it was very difficult to get, extremely expensive. We had to buy the, we had to buy the piece of property, forced, from, by eminent domain, there was a business that owned that property, we had to force them out, and we had to pay for, to move them out of Emeryville, and then we had to pay to clean up the soil, and then we had to build the park. So it was outrageously expensive, and we could be relieved of that level of expense, public expenditure, if we had a city council that would leverage their power over developers to have developers, instead of us having to pay, have developers help more than they have been paying. But the city council majority has not seen its way clear to doing that, for whatever reasons that may be. So that's a huge existential problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mora.
You've mentioned the need for ownership housing and parks as a need in the city. I think most of us on the city council would probably agree. Could you walk me through a recent development and how you would have otherwise coaxed, compelled, or incentivized the developer to build that ownership housing and also build park space?
Okay, first of all, I would disagree with you, that when you made your conclusion that you think that the city council writ large agrees with me that we need to build more parks, and, you know, to the extent that you said that, I think, I disagree. I don't, I think that the proof is in the pudding. They don't, the council majority does not want to build more parks. The council mayor himself said it, we're not going to build more parks because the parks come at the expense of housing, rental housing. And rental housing, market-rate rental housing, is what we need. He also likes affordable housing. Good for him. Good for us that he likes rental housing. But rent, but housing comes at the expense of parks, and I say, no, no, we need to have housing and we need to have parks. And we need, the housing we need to have needs to be based on the scientific method of having a jobs-housing balance, science, not people running around with their hair on fire saying, "We need more housing." That's not how we determine how much housing we need. And I'm sorry, I got off point with your question. I'm sorry, Mr. Mora.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Member Pryforce.
So thank you.
It comes from the people.
So thank you, Brian Donahue, for always, always bringing your spirit and your activism. So, you know, I had the experience during the Cal Cities Conference for new mayors and council members, along with our city manager, our city city manager, and my colleague, Councilmember Welch, for us to witness a play that was sort of a mock play. And in the play was about city council members, and it was someone who came up to the dais and said, "Oh, you're violating the Brown Act, and you're doing this, and you're doing that," right? And how best to deal with that person? But it was pretty, it was pretty understood that the town crier, or the watchman is the name of that person, is common in cities and towns all across America. You're not an anomaly, that we need people who can question us. I'm not an infallible leader. I think it's dangerous for infallible leader to exist, because then the people are afraid of challenging that leader, especially when they're black and brown. Then they're double afraid because they don't want to be called something that would deter them from challenging that person. And so, any criticism that I may receive in the future, I welcome it because that's how I better do my job. So as a journalist, as somebody who speaks for the public in, well, a segment of the public, in your way, I recognize you. However, a reporter or journalist has a lot of tools in their tool belt, in their portfolio to employ. Some of those tools that you use is violent communication and physical harassment. Given that light, where does power come from? From the top or from the people?
Okay, well, I'll restate what I said earlier, when I said the people. Let me restate that. It should come from the people, but I think in Emeryville, it doesn't. I think we have, it comes from the top, and I seek to change that. Now, regarding your charges of violent harassment, I think you said?
Violent communication and physical harassment.
Well, no, I, well, I take issue with that. I disagree with you. Yeah, sure, I'm a white male. I can't help it. I was born that way. Does that mean I should sit down and shut up and not be a community activist? I say no. I'm, you know, the fact that I'm a white, middle-aged, property-owning male can't be helped, and I'm still going to try to make my community better, even with that, those conditions that I have, that, you know, what makes me me, at least in that regard. So, and then violence, I abhor violence. I'm completely against it. Violence has no place in the public arena, and I don't engage in violence.
Thank you. I don't have a follow-up question for you, so if you'd like to take one minute, you have a closing statement.
The mayor has no follow-up.
Nope.
Okay, I didn't even get a chance here tonight to talk about the new activation, Active Transportation Plan that will force, that will remove measurability from our bike boulevard network, and about how that's a feature and not a bug for this council that doesn't like accountability. Oh, well. I object to the city council appointment tonight. It's undemocratic, and it will only cement the majority. Can we expect this body to select an independently-minded person like the voters did when they selected Mr. Pryforce? No, is the answer to that question. The people were not allowed to make their choice because Mayor Bouders and his colleagues said it would be too difficult to hold an election. Guess what? Democracy is difficult, but it's better than the alternative. You're going to, tonight, select a person that supports you, but that doesn't have the support of the people of the city of Emeryville, and we know that by default. Dissent is actively discouraged in these chambers, as I've shown tonight and for years, and what we need are new ideas here, not more of the same.
Thank you so much for your application and for coming this evening. I think we only have one applicant left. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the last applicant is Stephanie Singer. Thank you so much for waiting long enough to be the last person who will interview this evening. Ms. Singer, I will begin by welcoming you and inviting you to give a three-minute self-introduction.
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Singer. I moved to Emeryville in July, so I think I'm the newest person here. I moved because my daughter got married to a long-term Bay Area resident, and she's been here for a decade and has real roots here. She and her wife got married in May, and they bought a house, and I'm really, really excited, after a parapetetic life, to know that I'm going to be here for the rest of it. So my first career was in academia. I have a PhD in mathematics. I taught, including calculus, for 10 years. And after that, I got involved in retail politics. I got involved based on an issue that I cared a lot about, which was, how do you tell if an election was fair? And I was in the city of Philadelphia. I became a ward leader. That involved a lot of retail politics. I ended up running for, for the Board of Elections. I defeated a 36-year incumbent who had the full support of the, of the party machine. And I served for four years, which gave me a chance to work with people all over Pennsylvania, and also, well, I should say, to work with people in government all over Pennsylvania, and also the honor and privilege to be able to walk into any neighborhood in Philadelphia and to be welcomed to a community meeting and to hear what people had to say. Since leaving, since my term in service, I have been working on a national level on issues of election administration, and in particular, the intersection with technology. I believe deeply, deeply, that, that the more people are empowered to connect realistically with government, realistically with their power, the better off we are as a society. And, you know, technology and election administration may seem like a kind of abstract way to let that play out, but, I mean, to work on that. But, but that's what I do, and I do believe that good elections lead to empowerment. So, the point is that I have experience in government, I have experience in retail politics. My ward in Philadelphia was 28,000, so a little bit bigger than Emeryville, but at that level, and I'm honored to be here.
Thank you. The first question is, why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council?
So first of all, from a really personal perspective, my time as a city commissioner in Philadelphia was, it was the best job I ever had. I felt that it brought, it allowed me to bring to bear all kinds of things from just who I am. And I, it was also incredibly difficult. Philadelphia is a very corrupt environment. I was not beloved of the powers that were, and still, even in that environment, I just loved it, to be able to serve, and to go through the process of, you know, coming in thinking, "Oh, I know all these things, and I know what's right, and I know what needs to be done," and really to go through the process of listening to people and hearing, "Okay, wow, I don't know." And to realize that service, for me, is not so much about saying, "I know exactly how this should be done," unless we're talking about election administration, but in other areas, I mean, and even there, you know, to realize that it's, the service is serving the ideas that empower and make other people passionate and that other people care about. And that's very much, I see my role as an infrastructure person to enable that. I also think that women... role as an infrastructure person, to enable that. I also think that women need to step up. So, when I have an opportunity to step up, I do. And I also, boy, I was just so thrilled to watch some of the videos of your council meetings, and to just see how civil and straightforward they were compared to the politics I'm used to. And I love that your organization chart says it right there. You have the city council, and above the city council are the people of Emeryville. So, that's why I'm so excited to put myself forward for this. And also, I should say, I just wanted to be here and meet the other people who would put themselves forward for this and to meet you.
Thank you. The second question, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that you can contribute to the benefit of the city?
So, one is that I really understand data in the government context. I've even created materials for small government agencies to make the best use of the data that they have. I did that with funding from the Knight Foundation. And I would be, I think I have a lot to offer the city in that regard, just to see what data is there, how are we using it, how could we use it better. I also have experience working with different government agencies, and I understand the power dynamics between different agencies, and have a fairly realistic sense of how things, what it takes to get things done, when you need to convince other people to do something. Like, when is it realistic? When are the interests of your city and some other agency, or city, or state, or county, when do they line up, and when do they not? And when to, so when to push, and when to, when to just say, you know, that would be a nice idea, but let's not put any energy into it, because it probably won't fly. And I also, I have deep experience with empowering people. When I was a ward leader in Philadelphia, I got voter turnout up in my ward. And I did it by recruiting, 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 at every level, taking a person, if they're not a voter, make them a voter. If they're a voter, get them involved in a campaign. If they have been involved in campaigns, get them running. At every level, you empower people to step the next step up. And those are the experiences. Data, I'm a technocrat, but I also understand government relationships, and I understand empowering people.
Thank you. The third question, please identify and discuss your top three policy priorities or objectives for the city.
So, my first objective would be that Emeryville understands what data it has, and is making really sharp, good use of it, and also, in combination with data that it may not have now, but that is available. That's number one. Number two is connecting people in Emeryville to government, not just to the city council, but to government at every level. And realistically, what that means is, meeting people where they are, and showing them the next step to more involvement, the next step to more empowerment. At what time of the year do you get a chance to put your, to really push your elected officials to do the things you want them to do? Or what news sources, what kinds of things do you need to pay attention to, so that you'll be prepared when there's a two-week or one-month comment period? So, you'll be prepared to get not just you, but a bunch of people to make the comments that you think need to be made. So, that kind of work, to connect people who live in Emeryville to government, and to give them access to the tools that they have, but they may not know they have. And finally, and this is just a personal one, I live at the Watergate, and I walk my dog on the peninsula every morning. And some mornings, I take a trash picker and a trash bag, because, you know, there's trash on that peninsula. And some of it is just washed up out of the bay, and some of it is heartbreaking, because it's clearly from people who are living in their cars on Powell Street. And either way, no matter where it comes from, we're all happier when we have a clean path to walk on. So, I would also, that's an objective for me, is to make things a little cleaner.
Thank you. That concludes the three preset questions. There's an opportunity for one-minute follow-ups. We'll start with Councilmember Mora.
You mentioned the importance and power of data to affect change. What's an example of maybe some data that we might have or could collect in Emeryville specifically, and what type of change we could affect with that?
So, here's an example. There are parking meters in Emeryville. Are there parking meters in Emeryville? I've only been here since July. Okay, so there's data of when people come and park, how long they stay, when the parking spaces are, you know, the parking meters are not engaged. That data can be of use to businesses, because it is a proxy for how much traffic there is on the sidewalk. So, that's an example of a kind of way of using data.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pryforce.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, virtually and in person, for being a part of this process. And thank you for your patience for being the last one up. I haven't in a while, and I'm being exposed, as a newbie politician, I'm being exposed to a lot of politicians, you know, moderate, progressive. And I haven't heard a lot of the things that you've said in terms of the magnificent way that you, that you, of your focus on the people and the process, and building a bridge between the two. Since you're new to Emeryville, I believe, and I apologize if I get this wrong, I believe that the, that the person who is appointed, and may be appointed tonight, and may be sitting with us tonight, that they would have to, that their position would be up, or be up for election by Madam Clerk, by next year?
They'd fill the seat in 2024, December of 2024.
Okay. So, they don't have to go for, do the election process or anything? Or they do, they do? And so, so they would have to run next year? Okay. So, they would have to run next year? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the clarification. Thank you. And so, we've had applicants that you're, I guess, up against, who were able to have people mobilize, community organizing people, to send us a great amount of emails. And so, that kind of community organizing is going to be important for when the position is up, and you're, and you're running. And being new to Emeryville, there's a possibility that you may not have those same amount of people, or you didn't deploy that, right? And so, given that light, given that you're going up against people who know how to organize other people. And so, it's a step from, from just administrating in terms of office, to actually connecting and touching people, and getting them to take that time to do that, to send that email to Mayor Bouders, and myself, and other, my colleagues. Where does power come from? Does it come from the top, or does it come from the people?
Okay, so there are, I've had a lot of time to think about this question. But actually, this is what I thought of immediately, the first time you asked it. So, power comes from a bunch of different places. Power comes from relationships. Power comes from money. And thank goodness, power also comes from votes. So, power comes from the top. The people at the top have money, have relationships, and have networks that allow them to get votes. And the whole game of democracy is that power can also come from the bottom, if, if, if people know how to use the power they have, the power they have from voting, the power they have from influencing votes, from organizing. So, that's where power comes from. And it's a battle, and it never ends.
Thank you. Stephanie, I wanted to ask you a question about, well, David kind of asked part of my question, which was on the data component of cities. So, one of the challenges that small cities have is that most of the data from small cities is often an aberration. It's statistically outside of the norms. I'm a statistics student. So, it's outside of the norm of what you see in some communities. So, we, we're often told that we are the highest percentage of this, or the lowest percentage of that, and it's often because the sample set is very skewed or small, right? So, when you are presented with circumstances like that, another example is, there's a lot of funding formulas for transportation projects that are based on population, and not on vehicle miles traveled or impact, right? And this is a city with 13,000, 14,000 residents, but 36,000 daytime visitors. How do you, how do you, do you have an example of, or experience with, how you recommend small cities that have kind of skewed data sets in some circumstances, interpreting data in a way that actually benefits them, to make a case for how to do something better or different?
So, it depends really on what you are trying to do with your data. What's your objective? Is your objective to get more transit funding? If that is the case, so in that case, one thing, so one thing to do is to be really creative about how to find other data sets that are going to be relevant, and that you could combine with the data you have, or use as a proxy for the thing you want to really show. So, just an example of this, when I was on the Board of Elections in Philadelphia in 2012, the legislature and the governor signed a bill to create a voter ID law in Pennsylvania. This was one of the only laws that was eventually ruled unconstitutional at the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court level. And, and one of the things I was able to do was to say immediately, you know, we need the database of driver's licenses, and to go and get it, and to make the case that needed to be made.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch.
As a local elections official, over the last few cycles, we've seen a large increase in misinformation and disinformation. How did you battle that on a local level?
So, I served from 2012 to 2016, and it was not, I should say, until January of 2016. So, I didn't serve during the 2016 presidential election, which is where that issue really arose. For me, the issue was that the Philadelphia Board of Elections very deliberately gave almost no information to voters. So, my information war, if you will, was to get simple information, you know, like a voter booklet, seems like a natural thing to do. We didn't do it. So, to make that kind of thing happen. In the larger, for right now, for misinformation, there's a lot of work being done by a lot of people. I think what's missing is the empowerment of individuals to become nodes of good information in their networks. So, the way people are talking about misinformation at the professional level, how to fight it, it's all, it ignores the power of people to influence their own networks. And if I had a magic wand, that's what I would add to that mix.
Thank you. Stephanie, you have one minute to give a closing statement, or respond and follow up on anything else that you'd like.
So, I think what I offer you is a combination of vision, and I don't have a vision for Emeryville, because I haven't been here long enough. But I have a combination always of vision and realism. So, yes, see what ought to be. See it, really see it, what ought to be. And then, see what is, and see what's, what needs to move to turn what is, not into what ought to be, because it never happens, but into something closer to what ought to be. And even, you know, not getting to the ideal, it's heartbreaking, but, but, you know, if you, you know, if you get "I voted" stickers into the hands of a million people in Philadelphia who didn't get them before at the polling place, you've moved something.
Thank you so much for your time and your application and coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, that concludes the interview portion of tonight's agenda on the special meeting. Now will be the time for a public comment. There will be three ways in which we take public comment. One will be live comment. Second will be virtual comment, for those joining on Zoom. And third will be comments that have been received by the clerk, that were submitted through electronic submission, and were made by a person who has not spoken at live or virtual comment. Comment is for two minutes. Member of the public who is present in the council chambers who would like to give comment for this item has two minutes to do so. Betsy Cooley. And any others? If you'd like to just step in the back and wait in line, we'll just put you, take you up in the order, in the order that you come up.
Well, this is really short, so don't go too far. Mayor Bouders and council members, I endorse Sukdeep Cower for election, and I continue to support her. She's intelligent, thoughtful, conscientious, honest, and would be an asset to the council. She also would contribute to added diversity. Please vote 12 points, Secretary of City Council. I also didn't introduce myself. My name is Betsy Cooley. I've been a resident here for 36 years, also a resident of Watergate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Next speaker, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I, in the election, endorsed the two members who won their seats. My name is Diane Martinez. I am a resident of the Triangle Neighborhood. You might also remember me from sitting next to you up on that dais years ago. I recently retired after being a council member for eight years at this institution. I was impressed by several of the candidates tonight, especially the last one. But I'm here to register my support for Sukdeep Cower. I know what it takes to get this job done. And I know it requires someone to be an effective and collaborative policymaker. Ms. Cower has not only done significant outreach in our community, she's not only taken the time to understand the issues, but she's taken the time to understand the job. Ms. Cower recently campaigned for city council in the November 2022 election. And of all the applicants here who ran in that election, she garnered the most votes. So, if you care about returning power to the people of Emeryville, you will select Sukdeep Cower as the applicant for the vacancy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next speaker, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor staff. My name is Apri Sandhu, as Sukdeep mentioned, former council member, city of Richmond. I'm here to speak on my, by myself and some of the people, the city community that has lived in Emery for many, many decades. As you see, my parents also came to Emeryville in 1968. And they settled right on 37th Street. And I always heard stories from them when they were living on 37th, and the neighborhood's Emeryville. Many of the people who came and lived here were early immigrants, and just like Sukdeep's parents, my parents, and they worked in warehouses. My mom was a cook, had to take the bus from Emeryville to San Francisco and come back to this beautiful city. So, Sukdeep has that opportunity to represent many of the people here. But as, once before was mentioned, Sukdeep also was a voice for many of the people who voted for her. And that's something she's exercised and done so as well. While walking on one of the days, early in the campaign, we came upon a house, and there was a young lady gardening. And of course, Sukdeep reached over, hey, I'm such and such, I'm running for city council. And the first question, she said, well, who's endorsed you? And for most people, that kind of comes as a shock, but I know she said, I'm going to read your literature and all that, but who's endorsed you? So, I know, I understand, do people understand your values and your commitment to the city council? Sukdeep didn't mention them, but I like to mention who did endorse them, because she had the opportunity to meet other members. And as you know, that when you endorse somebody, you ask the person, what are your values, and what are you going to do for the city council? Getting endorsement is no easy example. So, right off the bat, and she had the opportunity, Gabe Quinto, Mayor of El Cerrito, at that time, not at the moment, Mayor from San Pablo, Rita Xavier, your fong la, for your county assessor. And of course, also, Mr. Downhill also served here as well. Along with that, county supervisors, Otto Lee and others. So, tonight, the power that you hold tonight is the power to appoint somebody, and that is the power vested in you by the public of Emeryville. So, we thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members here? We'll go online. Oh, you comment?
I would like to comment, yeah.
All right, you're welcome to comment. Two minutes, please. All right, you're welcome to comment. Two minutes, please.
So, at the last City Council meeting, I listened while the four of you discussed for over an hour about how to conduct the meeting we're at right now, how to figure out how to let people speak here tonight that are asking you to appoint them to the council. It was over an hour. You guys tied yourselves up in knots. And the reason why it was so difficult is because you had, you were struggling with continuing our democratic tradition, but also trying to stop Brian Donahue from being interviewed. You didn't use me by name, but it was very clear that's, you know, me or maybe somebody else as polarizing as me. So, I wasn't going to run. I wasn't going to put my name, not run, I wasn't going to put my name in the ring here for this selection until I heard the four of you tying yourselves up in knots, trying to figure out how do we stop Brian Donahue. It's when I heard that is when I thought, okay, well, I got to run now. Now, I got to, not run, I got to, I have to put my name in. Because I think it's, like, it was very telling of your lack of democratic inclusion and your lack of, you know, you don't have, also, like I said before, you don't have the public servant's heart. Instead, it's all about, you know, building a power base, and you're afraid of people that, like me, that come and speak the truth to power, and you're not, and you don't like accountability and transparency. Look, I understand, nobody does, but you know, you're paid to take accountability, and you're paid to accept people like me and people from the public coming to criticize, but you wrapping yourselves in knots, trying to figure out a way to stop it, very unbecoming. And so, that's the reason why I applied, and that's the reason why I'm here tonight, because you guys really dishonored yourself, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here who wish to comment on this item? Member, Madam Clerk, we have one hand raised virtually. Could you please promote Scott Donahue for speaking privileges? Good evening, Mr. Donahue. If you'd like to unmute, you have two minutes.
I'm a former council member, and I did endorse Sukdeep Kaur to run for City Council, and I walked my neighborhood and got her votes in my neighborhood because I thought she has exhibited in the past and would go forward exhibiting good judgment, how to balance the so many decisions all of you have to make on that dais between one thing and another. It's not a black and white decision that you have to make. Everything is a balance of various issues to get to a good end for our city. And I really believe Sukdeep is nuanced in her thinking and is really capable of independent thought and arriving at a balanced decision for our city. So, I encourage you to appoint Sukdeep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public online that would like to comment before we move to the written comments? Okay, we'll move to written comments. Madam Clerk, for any person who has not spoken this evening, please time yourself at two minutes and read the statement or comment into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is from Fran. I'm a long-term member of the city's Budget Advisory Committee, and I have more than a basic understanding of our city as an entity that is gearing toward its future. I've known Sukdeep Kaur as a member of my community and as a professional person doing her homework and exercising just and fair judgment. She is a conciliatory presence interested in the well-being of all. She likes to do things properly and understands her actions have ramifications which need to be considered. She is fair, professional, thoughtful, and interested in appropriate action. She does her homework. She gets along with all and respects other people. She understands numbers, the law, and appropriate action. She will be a terrific addition to our City Council. Fran Quittle, member, Budget Advisory Committee, and Emeryville resident.
Thank you. Please reset the clock. Okay.
I write with enthusiasm to support Sukdeep Kaur's appointment to the open City Council seat. We first met when Sukdeep provided weekday morning casual carpool trips to downtown San Francisco. Over the years, I have seen firsthand her generosity of service to fellow Emeryville citizens, from planting vegetables and sharing the produce from our community garden to serving on the Watergate HOA board to assisting vulnerable seniors isolating for their health during the COVID pandemic by running errands and grocery shopping for them. Most recently, Sukdeep volunteered with the Sierra Clubs Project to measure data about the winter king tides and their impact on Emeryville shoreline and streets. Sukdeep is passionate about being well-informed on all of the issues facing the city. I have utmost confidence that she will bring a conscientious, grounded, and trustworthy voice to decisions facing the city and community of Emeryville. All citizens will benefit from her service, and I urge you to appoint her to the Emeryville City Council. Sincerely, Julia Clayton.
Thank you. Please read the next comment.
There are over three thousand people living west of I-80, which acts as a natural divider of the city. It has been several years since the Western Front has had direct representation on the City Council. I realize that all the members of the Council are elected at large and are supposed to represent the interests of all the residents. However, it is only natural that people represent the interests they know, they know best, which is where they live. Until we move toward a district voting approach, it is important to have at least one member of the Watergate Marina part of the city. There are two candidates who are qualified to serve from our area, Eugene Swaye and Sukdeep Kaur. Both were tested in the recent election. Sukdeep has a strong claim to be appointed since she was almost elected with over one thousand votes. One member of the Council stated that she was one of the two candidates he was going, he was voting for. Her appointment would add gender and racial diversity, as well as a strong commitment to climate change, sustainable housing and building, and experience in litigation. Indeed, a very strong choice. Thank you. Ron Frund.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
We wholeheartedly recommend Sukdeep Kaur for Emeryville City Council. Sukdeep is tirelessly committed to the betterment of all things and all people, with her chosen profession to be of value and support in industries and people in need, to her openness and eagerness for learning and advancing personal knowledge in such areas as financial organization, environmental and climate-friendly solutions, homeownership, collective responsibility pursuits, and more. She served on the Watergate Community HOA Board with grace, compassion, and solutions-oriented approaches that have changed the quality of life for residents for the permanent good. Sukdeep is a people person and makes a concerted effort to understand and listen to community concerns with open curiosity. Sukdeep is also a well-rounded person as a creative person, writer, poet, and in pursuit of holistic life approaches. She exerts influence in everything and strives for excellence in processes, awareness, and solutions. We firmly believe in Sukdeep's capabilities to bring forth a City Council platform that will serve the residents of Emeryville community at large. And that's from Selena Gupta and Sam Hachem.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
I would like to comment about Sukdeep Kaur as a person and as a professional, and I am happy that she has chosen to serve the people of Emeryville, California. My wife and I have known Sukdeep for more than twelve years as a neighbor, as a friend, and as someone who is ready to help and be of service. Sukdeep pales from the land of Five Rivers or the Punjab in India. Her people are mostly warriors and farmers. I have read a biological sketch of hers and learned that she is self-made person who had to deal with many problems and obstacles on her journey to becoming a licensed attorney here in the U.S. She is now a successful professional and works in San Francisco. Poetry is her passion, and I have read some of her sweet poems. They are spiritual and speak of love and compassion and of nature and the environment. When I see her black and white picture as seen on her brochures and posters, I imagine coloring it. I will color her hair green because she is always thinking of nature. Her jacket will be the typical black that attorneys wear, and her heart will be in gold. Her spirituality has taken her to the Dalai Lama and, sorry, Sufi retreats, and I believe that seva or service is now her spiritual, is how her spirituality manifests itself. When a professional attorney who is willing and able to serve comes forward for public elected office, we have an excellent candidate, and I, for one, will vote for her and would humbly ask other people to trust her and give her the chance that she is seeking to be of service. Sukdeep Kaur will be an asset to the city of Emeryville. Please join me and many other residents of the city in placing our trust and confidence and choice for our city in a deserving counselor. Thank you. Alum Dar Arastu, Registered Architect.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
I have known, I have met Sukdeep and know she will find and implement effective solutions for the issues facing our city. Please vote for her. This one's unsigned.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
As an artist and teacher who has lived and voted in Emeryville for eighteen years, I strongly believe that the City Council needs a council member who will represent the large and important artist constituency in the city and represent the vital role that art-making and art presentation plays in transforming and energizing the city, its people, and its children. I support the application of any of the applicants for the open City Council seat who is qualified to represent or is willing to do the work to represent the role of art in engineering Emeryville. I support the application of any candidate who will work to finely build and fund the Emeryville Art Center as a fully funded center. And that is from Gloria.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Dear City Councilors, we write in support of Sukdeep Kaur as a candidate for appointment to the currently vacant City Council seat. She ran an excellent campaign in the recent election, and she understands clearly the challenges the city faces in these uncertain economic and social times. It is also in her favor that she is a Watergate resident and will ably represent the needs of this population segment of the city's population, as well as the city as a whole. Please give her your vote. We are longtime residents of the city and have been active participants in its political, economic, and social affairs for more than two decades. Sincerely, Bill Ruder and Ruth Major.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Sukdeep Kaur would make an exceptional member of this City Council. Not only did she run in the recent election with passion and integrity, she received more than a thousand votes, including that of Mayor Bowers, and with just one hundred and eighty votes behind Councilmember Mora, she earned strong support from the Emeryville community. She is a longtime resident of Emeryville and a trial lawyer for twenty-plus years. She has handled complex legal issues and is well-equipped to deal with the myriad issues of governance that come before this council. She also happens to be my older sister. She is a role model. She has a character of grit and determination. At the same time, she's a lover of literature and poetry with the passion of giving back and working to serve this community and championing its needs well into the future. She would make an able and committed representative and colleague. Your vote can ensure so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Is that the last one?
That was the last one, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing and hearing none, public comment is closed. I want to thank all the applicants for taking the time and putting your name forward and submitting an application and coming here and taking questions this evening. I want to thank the members of the public who have followed this meeting this evening and who have written and provide their perspective and opinions to us. That's what makes a democracy healthy, so thank you for that. We'll now turn to the discussion, and as was outlined earlier, what we will do is we'll revisit each of the six folks we interviewed this evening, one at a time, and I will ask each member on the dais to provide in less than one minute just highlights as to their takeaways from meeting with each applicant, what they heard or thought. It's really up to you, but we're going to limit each of us to one minute so that there's an equitable amount of voice time on the dais. Upon the completion of that for each of the six applicants and giving them that feedback, we will then move to the discussion about potential appointment. So, the first applicant we met this evening was John Woods. And members, if you'd like to just take a look at any of your notes for a moment as we go back through folks that we interviewed this evening, picking up where we left off in the order that we had set earlier, I will ask if Councilmember Pryce Forrest would go first in providing one minute of comments.
I vote for John Woods.
Okay. So, we're not taking any action or votes right now. This is just comments on them. So, do you have any comments or feedback? No. Okay. So, I'll go next. For applicant John Woods, I want to thank Mr. Woods for applying and focusing on something that has been a problem historically in the city that has been raised by a number of folks, which is how do we make the best use of empty storefronts and mixed-use buildings? He was the only applicant that focused the majority of his interest on that topic. And as someone who's cared a lot about small business growth and development in the city, I understand, and knowing what we need to build our local economy, I appreciate his feedback on that. He also talked about affordable housing as one of his top three priorities and goals, which has been mine, my top priority since I was first a candidate. And he spoke to having empathy, and I believe he was the only applicant who used the word empathy. And I want to acknowledge and appreciate the recognition of empathy in government and thank him for his application. Vice Mayor Welch.
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Woods for his application. I, too, was very impressed with his ideas around filling the empty storefronts. It does have an effect on the city and its appearance, seeing lots of empties, lots of empty storefronts. It does add to blight in the city, and it has been an issue. So, I was very impressed that that was a part of his priorities for the city. And so, yes, I was very impressed with that.
Thank you, Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mora.
I appreciated his application and how he mentioned that he was a non-driver, which I think gives him a good perspective as a pedestrian walking streets that can sometimes be intimidating, if not dangerous, to non-drivers. I think he identified some very serious problems that don't necessarily have simple solutions, housing, crime. He mentioned package thefts. A lot of buildings are contending with that, blight on storefronts. I didn't hear too much about specifically how he would address those, but I think he's picked on to some issues that we can't ignore.
Thank you. The second applicant we interviewed this evening, members, was applicant Sukdeep Kaur. And in the rotation, I will give my comments first this time. I want to thank you so much for not just applying this evening, but for running and for dedicating the time it takes to understand the community, to listen to other people, to engage people in difficult conversations in a manner that is both open, receptive, and positive. One of the most challenging parts about government today is the lack of civility in the discourse that we have. And if there was anything I would give you as a testament to who you are and the time that I have known you, it would be that you are an exemplary person when it comes to positive mindset and positivity and putting people and issues ahead of ourselves. That is critical to running a model government, which you cited repeatedly. And I want to thank you for having that tenor in the way you presented. Civility doesn't require agreement. And I know that you and I don't agree on all the issues, but it is more important that we have civility in the discourse than we have agreement in the issues. Vice Mayor Welch.
Yes, I just want to echo the mayor's sentiments. Sukdeep, I'm always very impressed with your experience as a lawyer and in sustainability and just your, the way you give so much of yourself to the city. It's evidenced by several individuals writing in who will attest to your character and truly that you have a public servant's heart. So, thank you for running, and thank you for putting your hat in the ring tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Mora.
Just to add to that, Sukdeep, it was a pleasure when we campaigned alongside each other, and I again applaud you on your performance in the election, getting to know you and through your application. I think you have a very sincere commitment to the environment, to sustainability.
I, I think you have a very sincere commitment to the environment, to sustainability, to the city. I saw how you engaged with people, and that was also demonstrated by the overwhelming written letters of support I've received by email, written in during public comment and the folks here today. And also, I, I think your commitment, it's not just sincere, but what I particularly appreciate is a lot of it is actionable. You, you get into the specifics, you get into the details, these are the next steps that it takes to actually get things done. Anybody can point out problems, but I, I do get a sincere sense that you are committed to solving them.
Thank you, Councilmember Pryforce?
So for the rest of the applicants, my answer would be two seconds, so, because I'm going to go a little extended with this one.
One minute.
Sukdeep, Sukdeep, you are super dope. You are. And you are a light in Emeryville, and I would like for Emeryville residents, workers, students to see how you bring the noise, how you bring the funk, right? The amount of support that you were able to garner, the, the relentlessness of your, your, your passion. I have always been impressed by you, I've never been shy about telling you that, and I believe that you are going to be a, 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 a great leader, you know, should you be chosen by my colleagues. I already choose you, like, just amazing, it just, I am just so impressed by you. Now, politics can be a certain way where-
That's your time. Member Pryforce, you're out of, member Pryforce, you're out of order.
Politics can be, politics can be a way where people can change once they get into this position, and then my hope is that you don't change. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We are on Mr. Sway, and you are first.
Mr. Sway, thank you as well for running in the election and participating in our democratic process. I was very impressed with your idea of having family therapy readily accessible in Emeryville. I was not able to ask a follow-up question to my follow-up question, but I would love to hear more about how you would integrate that into city services. But thank you for that idea, I think it's very helpful and share some of the same sentiments you made about the importance of having accessible family therapy for families throughout the Bay Area.
Thank you, Member Mora?
Eugene, I appreciate you applying. I, in particular, I'm, I'm very happy that you and Sukdeep, having run, chose to apply. I've mentioned previously, I think that's one of the highest qualifications, is showing that commitment to the, to the city and engaging in that process. I, I think you have many broad and wide-ranging ideas involving schools, health, and fitness, Not all of them are within the purview of, of the city government, but I, I think it's important to have those big ideas. One thing that I found a little lacking, though, is a little bit on the, the implementation. How do you get from these wide ambitious ideas and turn those into reality? What is the step-by-step progression? And I, I think that's, we should dream big, but also keep an eye on practical implementation.
Thank you, Member Pryforce?
I vote for Eugene Sway, and you also used the word empathy.
I want to thank you for your application. Next speaker was Matthew Solomon, and Member Mora is first.
I found, I found Matthew's application to be very thoughtful, very thorough, his thoughts on housing, transportation, his work with an environmental nonprofit, just the, the way he perceives government in a small city and how that is very impactful. Everything that he said actually really resonated strongly with me. His focus on safe streets, this, and the opportunities for energy and sustainability. I kind of want to mention, like, even if we can only, I know we can only, it's a shame we can only appoint one person tonight, but I think there's a lot of talent in the room, and I'd like to keep track of all the folks who applied. But I, I did find Matthew's application very impressive.
Thank you, Member Pryforce?
I vote for Matthew Solomon.
Thank you. Matthew, I want to thank Matthew for being a member of a resident committee and taking the time to get to know the city and engage with other residents and stakeholders in one of the most common forms of democracy, which is a city committee, and volunteering his time to that end. Matthew prioritized three issues, housing, transportation, and climate action, which happened to be three of the four things that residents, when we regularly engage with them in surveys and polls and meetings, identify as the priorities they have for the community. So I appreciate Matthew reflecting the values of the community. Obviously, as somebody who is in a pro, of a pro-housing mindset and the need to develop more affordable housing that's available to deeply low-income families and make our city more equitable, I appreciate his emphasis on the pro-housing designation and our housing element. And I also appreciate his interest in the Safe Streets Plan and hope that Matthew will continue his service in the community. Vice Mayor Welch?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Solomon for his application, and I was very impressed with his desire to keep serving the city. He's a member of the B-PAC and obviously very knowledgeable about the city and infrastructure and wanting to take that experience and invest it in the city at the council level. I deeply appreciate him wanting to utilize his talents with us.
Thank you. That brings us to Brian Donahue, and Member Pryforce is first.
I vote for Brian Donahue.
Thank you, I just, I'm next, and I just want to thank Mr. Donahue for his application. And despite his, his belief that there's not an interest in hearing from different voices, just acknowledge that we hear from you regularly, and that's in all forms and shapes. And I agree that democracy dies in darkness. So for as many times as I may disagree with you on positions you've had or held, or your assessment and perspective of the city, I appreciate that as a resident of the city, you are engaged in the city in a way that brings a perspective to the city that would not otherwise be shared in your absence. So thank you for your application. Vice Mayor Welch?
Thank you for your application, Mr. Donahue. I appreciate it.
And Member Mora?
I do sincerely appreciate the application from Mr. Donahue. I think he took the application, I think he raised some important points, even though he contends that we don't feel like ownership housing or parks are important. I, I know sincerely that the city council does, and I think maybe it will be an ongoing debate, it's less about what is important and more about how do we get there. So I, I appreciate his engagement and taking the application process seriously, and I, I definitely, one way or the other, I, I would have opted to interview him. So thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our last applicant, Stephanie Singer, and I am first on this one. So I want to welcome you to the city of Emeryville as a, I think, one of the newest residents that we've heard from this evening, and thank you for your time. And you raised some really, you raised things I didn't expect to hear tonight. Data was a big one, and just really the, the opportunity for that. And as something, you, you know, you framed it really well in a way. It is a really important issue, along with finances. I've served seven years now as the Budget and Governance Chair, and data and finances are a very unsexy thing that are critical to actually managing a city well. And we have fantastic staff here in the city who support that work, but I think it was, it was a very healthy and welcome thing to hear somebody understand the importance of that to local government. And I hope that whatever happens this evening, you will remain engaged in the city and we'll find a way to help include you in what we do. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Welch?
Stephanie, I want to thank you for your application. I was very new myself when I ran. I lived in Oakland and lived in Berkeley, but was new to the, within Emeryville city limits. And I know sometimes it does feel like when you step up, it, you're not saying you know everything, but you want to step up and step in and lean into your new hometown. And so I appreciate you for being brave and bold in that and sharing so much of your background, which is very interesting and, and also very instrumental in, in our democracy and you stressing access to even the most simplest of voter information, things that we take for granted here in California. I don't think I can ever remember when I didn't get a voter packet, and you'll see them in the recycling bin every election, and people don't even look at them, and I've never experienced not having one. So thank you for pushing for those just minor details that sometimes we take for granted in states that honor the voting system more.
Thank you, Member Mora?
Stephanie, I'm thrilled that you selected Emeryville as your new home, and I'm thrilled with the perspective that you bring. I, I think much of what you said felt like a breath of fresh air, your perspectives on data and the, the vision for what a city can be and where it is, and looking for ways to, to bridge that really resonated with me. I, I know you're, you're new to the city, and, and I, I echo what Mayor Bowder says, and I'm, I'm hoping that you stay engaged with, with the city, maybe the committees or also just aspects of city government. Thanks for applying.
Thank you, Member Pryforce?
I vote for Stephanie Singer.
Thank you. So that concludes the sharing of thoughts. So we've heard from the applicants, the public, and from each other at a high level, and I would like to ask the clerk, I believe you're going to take over at this point to facilitate the conversation insofar as identifying councilmembers' first two choices and tracking it for the public to watch.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen, and we'll do it in real time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the selection from each council member would be your top two choices. Councilmember Mora?
Make that bigger, it's out of focus, it's too small.
Thank you.
My first choice is for Sukdeep Kar, and I'm somewhat split on my second choice between Matthew, Mr. Solomon and Mrs. Singer, Stephanie and Matthew. If I have to make a decision between those two, I'll be able to do it if it comes down to it.
We do need you to do that, yes. That's the part of being up here.
I'll go with Matthew.
And everyone's going to be given a one as the scoring so that the totals are equal. Councilmember Pryforce, your top two choices?
My top choice is Sukdeep, and if I had to make a second choice, it would be Stephanie Singer.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch?
Sukdeep Kar and Stephanie Singer.
And Mayor Bowders?
Sukdeep Kar is my first choice, Stephanie Singer is my second choice. Members, the floor is open for discussion or motions. Vice Mayor Welch?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I forgot to raise my hand.
Okay, I saw you push, go ahead.
I move appointment of Sukdeep Kar to the Emeryville City Council.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, is there a discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none? Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Councilmember Mora to appoint Sukdeep Kar to the Emeryville City Council immediately.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Congratulations and welcome to the Emeryville City Council. Sukdeep, if you would please join the city clerk at the podium, she will swear you in to join us on the council dais. Pull that microphone down so that the folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name, do so solemnly swear or affirm-
I, Sukdeep Kar, do so solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California-
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the, of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a council member for the city of Emeryville.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a council member for the city of Emeryville.
Sukdeep, give us one second. The clerk has an oath for you to sign, correct?
Yes, after I fill in the name, Mayor, I will have her sign.
Okay. So what I would like to do, members, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:57 PM. I would like to adjourn the special meeting, and we will have a five-minute recess so that the clerk can have Sukdeep take her oath and sign it before we can conduct the Members of the public who patiently waited while we have, we've made all of our adjustments and changes here. Okay, members, the next item we have, are we on recording? Great. We have one short meeting, the redevelopment agency. So Madam Clerk, the time is 8:11 PM. I would like to call to order this meeting of the city of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. As was noted earlier this evening, it's being conducted via a hybrid format. We're present today at City Hall and members of the public may join us on Zoom to provide comment or watch or participate in the meeting. You can also submit electronic speaker cards online in advance through the city's website to the clerk, who will read your comments at the appropriate time. This time, I would like to ask if the clerk would please call the roll for the redevelopment agency.
Council Member Mora?
Present.
Council Member Pryforce?
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Present.
And Mayor Bowders?
Present. And we have another member, please?
Oh, I apologize.
We literally just did this for two hours.
I just did this.
Please get her a drink of water.
Council Member Kar? Thank you.
Okay, so all of us are present. Approval of the final agenda, is there a motion to approve this agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Council Member Kar?
Present. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll abstain because, or you're just calling the roll, yes. Present.
It's the approval of the final agenda.
This is a yes or no on approving the agenda for the meeting?
Yeah. Can I abstain? Because I'm not
You can abstain on everything tonight if you'd like to, because I know you've had no orientation and you're welcome to vote on anything that you would like to as well. We're all, the motion before you is just simply to approve this agenda to allow us to move through the
In that case, I will vote, yes.
Okay, one other detail, could you, I'll help with that, Drew, I got it. So one other thing, when you speak, could you please, she's got it, push the button, there you go. Push it once. The green light's on, now talk.
Aye, I vote.
Thank you, we have an aye vote.
Council Member Mora?
Aye.
Council Member Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Thank you, members. Ex parte communications, are there any to report? Seeing and hearing none, ex parte communications are closed. Public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item that's not on tonight's agenda have two minutes to do so. Please recognize the speaker for two minutes. Good evening.
So I listened closely to the last agenda item for the last, what would you call it? Last meeting, last, okay, the last agenda item, the last forum where we were selecting the council members, the new council member. Okay, I listened closely and I noted that the Mayor Bowders, Mayor John Bowders interrupted, dropped the gavel rudely against Council Member Pryforce almost instantaneously after his allotted time had elapsed. Okay, so if the mayor were to do that in a fair and equitable way, do it to everyone equally, well, that would have been fine. Except the problem is the mayor didn't do that. And you can go back, anybody watching here on TV or Mayor himself can go back and watch how you let other people, other council members of your colleagues, speak longer after the buzzer went off than you did Council Member Pryforce. Now, it's no secret that Mayor Bowders is not friendly with Mayor Pryforce. There's been a lot of animosity, there's been a lot of charges leveled, a lot of lack of civility, which I thought is ironic, you were talking about that early, earlier. It's pretty clear that you're not, you don't, you're not a big fan of Council Member Pryforce, but you don't have to be. But what you do have to do is treat him fairly and equitably, the same as you treat your other three council members, now three. So you were not, you were unfair to him. And, you know, Council Member Pryforce was elected by the people of the city of Emeryville. He represents us. So we don't appreciate the two levels of justice being meted out by the mayor, one for the favored colleagues and then one for the non-favored colleagues. We don't appreciate that. We expect fairness and we expect you to be equitable. And we don't want to see your personal peccadilloes before everyone to see here. So please rein that in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any of the members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda? Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to make a public apology to John Bowders, the mayor, because I have spoken badly about him in the past. And I've also been mixed up with publications by people who have also spoken badly about Mayor Bowders. And I want to publicly apologize for anything I've said that has been hurtful, because that's certainly not my intent. And I spoke earlier about being responsible for one's thoughts and actions. So I want to make this very clear to everyone and all the public and especially to John Bowders, that I'm very, very, I'm very, very hurt that I acted that way, that I made those comments and that I was, that I was reeled in by publications that were known to harm you, because that's certainly not my intention. So please accept my apology and please know that I humbly apologize for everything I've ever said that has harmed or been interpreted badly about you, because I certainly want to be your friend. I respect everything you're doing. I respect the aspirations you have for the city. And I want to have a clear path of communication between us and between everyone else on the council. So I publicly humble myself for anything I might have done in the past that has created pain and suffering and harm to any one of you. So please take my apologies seriously. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. I appreciate that. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Members, are there any items that you wish to pull or discuss?
Mayor?
Yes.
There is a hand raised on
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one virtual hand raised. Can we please recognize Gloria Tonklov? Good evening, Gloria.
Hi, the name is Gloria Tansheller. And can you hear me?
We can. You have two minutes to give comment.
I want to congratulate you all on the choice you made of Sukdeep Kar. And I also want to say something about the comment card that I sent in yesterday that didn't take me long but was very considered. And I was insulted that the city clerk chose not to pronounce my name. It's not that difficult. It's Gloria Tansheller. And I do hope that the city will address the issue of the Emeryville Arts Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And we will make sure that that is collected in the record for future use on comments. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on the redevelopment agency? And Madam Clerk, did you receive any written comment cards? Okay, public comment is closed. Consent calendar items, members, are there comments or anything that you wish to discuss on consent? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay. Can I help you? We're on the redevelopment agency meeting, Igor. Okay, so there's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora. Please call the roll.
Council Member Kar?
Aye.
Council Member Mora?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. There are no action items, members. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:20. This meeting is adjourned. We'll now move to the city council meeting. Okay, the time, Madam Clerk, is 8:20 PM. I'd like to call to order this regular city council meeting for the City of Emeryville. I'd like to note, Madam Clerk, that all members remain present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this meeting.
I move approval of the agenda.
Aye, second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. The agenda is approved. We'll now move to special orders of the day. We have two. The second item, members, is being continued to a future meeting. So, we have one item tonight, which is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville standing in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. I'm going to read this brief proclamation and then invite public comment from the requesting party, Igor Treigub. So, "Whereas the 24th of February marks the one-year anniversary of the Russian Federation's and Vladimir Putin's illegal invasion and occupation of the Ukraine. And whereas the Kremlin, as the aggressor, has committed gross violations of human rights and war crimes against the Ukrainian people. And whereas the City of Emeryville's support for the democratic nation-state and people of Ukraine remains steadfast, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Emeryville does hereby proclaim February 24, 2023, as the Day of Ukrainian Solidarity in Emeryville, California. And be it further resolved that the City of Emeryville honors the Ukrainian people and their indomitable spirit of courage and resilience in the face of unjust aggression, and urges all Emeryvillians to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities to demonstrate their commitment to Ukraine and its people, proclaimed on this the 21st day of February 2023 by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville." And I'd like to invite Igor to join us at the microphone and make some brief remarks. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bowders, members of the Emeryville City Council, and congratulations to Councilmember Cowher. I'm Igor Treigub, and today I'm simply speaking as a native of Kiev, Ukraine. I want to thank you, not just on my own behalf, but on behalf of all Ukrainian Americans living here and abroad, in Emeryville and elsewhere in the Bay Area. And we do have some on Zoom as well that I want to recognize Natalia and Volodymyr Goschilik. They are Ukrainian natives that are currently teaching at UC Berkeley. Thank you for this proclamation. It means a lot. This has been a tough year, but your solidarity is steadfast, and that means the world to the small but tight-knit and mighty community. Earlier tonight, I was also at the El Cerrito Council meeting to accept their proclamation. And thank you to the Emeryville City Council for becoming the first Alameda County jurisdiction to mark this one-year anniversary as a day of solidarity. I would like to invite you to several events that are being organized. And I will later tonight send this by email. And I would certainly, it would be wonderful if you could pass them along to your constituents as well and invite them. This Thursday, the 23rd, there will be a flag raising of the Ukrainian flag at 4:00 PM in front of the Modell Shire Old City Hall in Berkeley, across the street from 2134 MLK Junior Way. Then, on Friday, February 24, 11:30 to 2:00 PM, we will be holding a performance art show titled "Attempt to Focus" in front of the San Francisco City Hall at the Civic Center. And this is all part of a fundraiser that we are doing right now. We are almost two-thirds to our goal. And with your support, we will meet and exceed that $10,000 goal, where 100% of the efforts will go towards necessary medicine, food, and other resources such as relief from not just the physical, but the psychological strains of war, specifically for those brave Ukrainian soldiers, many of them civilians turned soldiers, who are returning from the battlefield and support for their families. And the GoFundMe link to that, I will put that in an email, but it's bit.ly/rebuildingukraine. And I think it's case-sensitive, so the R and the U are uppercase. Again, on behalf of everyone, and if there's time, it would be wonderful to also hear from Natalia. But I just wanted to relay a jakuyu, which means "thank you" in my native Ukrainian tongue. Thank you for standing fast and strong with the peaceful people and the democratic nation-state of Ukraine, which, just like the US, is attempting to remain as one nation, indivisible, as its people are fighting on the front lines every day, not just for self-determination there, but for the ability of every democratic nation-state to be able to determine its own destiny. Svobodkryini, and I hope we do get a chance to hear from Natalia.
Thank you, Igor. Now, we'll call for public comment on this item. Members of the public will have two minutes to speak. And I would like to first invite Natalia, I can't read it, it's so small, Goschilik. If she wants to speak, because she raised her hand, please. There we go. Could we please promote her to speaking? Good evening, Natalia.
Yes, do you hear me?
We can, we can, go ahead.
Yes, okay, yes, thank you very much. Dear councilmembers, thank you very much for standing strong, standing with Ukraine today and for this proclamation. It's so important for me as a Ukrainian native and for the last year and a half as the resident of California to understand that there are so many people who are supporting us here in US and all over the world. And we understand the neighbors. And I'm speaking to you right now from Berkeley, so that's why people in Emeryville are actually the neighbors and very close neighbors. And they are standing strong and supporting us. Today, I felt so proud when I was listening to President Biden's speech. And he was so courageous to visit Kiev yesterday. I may be confusing the dates because like time differences, but like today, he was speaking universal. And he was saying that Kiev is standing strong, and Ukraine is standing strong. And I would add that the US is standing strong. And both the US and Ukraine are now the global trendsetters for speaking for the democracy, speaking for the liberty and freedom. And that's why it's so important to acknowledge this and to thank you once again for helping Ukraine and helping us, the Ukrainians, for here in California. I feel very humbled and privileged and proud to be speaking to you, to have this opportunity to address to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Natalia. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, thank you, Igor. And just want to, I want to send my appreciation to you and Natalia with some brief remarks. I don't usually speak on special orders of the day, but I'm the oldest of many grandchildren on my father's side of the family. And I still have a majority of my grandparents in my mid-40s. And I knew my great-grandparents into my early teens. And one of them, my oma, was a Belgian Flemish-speaking immigrant to this country after most of her family was murdered by the Germans in World War I. And she came to this country and spoke no English for almost her entire time here. Her husband was killed in a work accident at 35, and she raised three children on her own, washing clothes in other people's homes. She went to church every morning. She died at 96 years old. And I went back to visit her hometown in Flanders in Belgium this past fall. And to see a community that had been ravaged by war, a peaceful community, where the church was built in three different types of bricks because it had been bombed in multiple wars. And you could literally see what parts of the church survived each war. To see a community destroyed and healed but not forgotten. She lived with a lot of courage. And I think it's easy for us in the modern era to forget that many of the geopolitical circumstances that people in this country benefit from is the product of people who have sacrificed immensely and who have suffered and who have lived through trauma. And history is something that people often think fatalistically is bound to repeat itself, but does not need to be repeated. And I feel fortunate and blessed and privileged that I have never experienced war and genocide. But I think it's really important that we not disregard what is happening in Ukraine as a reality of life or a human experience that is necessarily inevitable and must happen, and it's just happening somewhere else on the globe. Real people are being harmed. And I just really think it's, as somebody who has taken the time to understand my own family's history and how war really changed the trajectory of her life, she was going to go to college, and she didn't. She ended up washing people's clothes for a living. I just really want to appreciate you for being a voice for your community, and Natalia for being a voice for your community, and elevating this so that we are not numb to the fact that there are people suffering every day as a consequence of this incredibly horrible unilateral action by an aggressor. So, thank you for coming out here this evening. You are a blessing on behalf of your community. Thank you for being here. Okay. That, we will move to announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The current recruitment is open, and it closes on April 3. Applications are available on the website with all of the positions that are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, there's council member special announcements for reports on meetings and attendance. You don't have any yet, Member Carr, so I'll give you a pass tonight. Vice Mayor Welch, do you have any special announcements for meetings that you attended?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Member Mora.
No.
Member Pryforce.
Yeah, I do. So, I was recently elected as a delegate, I guess a KDEM delegate. And there was a really interesting meeting that reson, the reason why I mention it is because it resonates with the process of electing our new council member. So, during the meeting, it was a conversation on whether or not we, as a body of delegates, should condemn Assemblymember Mia Bonta for not recusing herself from a role that would have her, a role that would have her supervising her husband, who is also our Attorney General, his budget. And thankfully, and kudos to Assemblymember Mia Bonta, she did recuse herself. There was a time that there was resistance to it, but she did. And it speaks to her leadership and being able to receive community feedback. And the reason why the connection is there is because of all the numerous letters in support of our newest council member, some of them were a bit troubling because the reason why Assemblymember Mia Bonta, in terms of public feedback and the way it was, I've been engaging in these conversations in that meeting, is because if she hadn't recused herself, it would have increased public distrust of her seat and of herself and of her husband. It would have been, it would just been, it wouldn't have been good when it came to public trust. And so, I appreciate what Eugene Sway did in terms of the apology. My thoughts on that is that it should be less about Mayor Bowders and more so about city council. And that when we have these comments that go out that are like sort of these direct insults, it erodes public trust in the city council. And the criticisms are fair. They are so fair, which is why, what I mentioned about Brian Donahue, criticisms are fair. If you don't see us do the right thing, if you see that there's a conflict of interest, then you speak to it. And some of the people who advocated for our new council member, they also were okay when I made comments during my first council meeting about the issues of Mayor Bowders becoming mayor again. And that whether or not it's legal or whether or not it's ethical, which tends to be the argument that politicians make, that it's legal and that it isn't ethical, that it would erode the public trust for there to be another mayor, for a mayor to be mayor twice, when the general understanding to the public is that the mayorship rotates. And so, some of the people who advocated for our new council member were okay with that, and they added comments wherein they said that they were okay with that. And at the same time, so those comments, I was not a fan of. But they were few far in between of all the overwhelming support that was provided to our new council member. And if there's anything that helps define where I am in relation to the rest of the city council or where I am in relation to the city, is that I will always focus on making sure that the people have trust in who we are and what we do, and that what we're doing is for them. What we're doing is for the public good. And so, during the meeting, I suggested that we wait before we make a decision. And then, Assemblymember Bonta recused herself. And it was good because she is over Emeryville as Assemblymember, Oakland and Alameda, but also Emeryville. We just, we're redistricted into Assembly District 18. And so, it was good for all of us. And I just hope that we use her as a model of knowing that the public trust in our institutions is very important. That, those are my comments.
Okay, I will report on a meeting that I attended. So, I serve as the city's representative to the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and we have a monthly commission meeting. And I'm very pleased to report that this past year, as Chair of the Commission, I led a coalition of folks to Washington DC for one week of meetings with transportation agencies and leaders at the Department of Transportation, where we advocated for the philosophies of the county, which was introduced in my opening chair proposal last year and adopted by the Commission, which is to focus on safety, equity, and climate in the transportation funding priorities for the next two years. We received a CHRISI grant this past year for the county, which was the largest rail safety grant in the nation that was awarded in the first round of funding. And this past week, it was announced through Senator Padilla's office, through a call to myself, and put out at our meeting that San Pablo Avenue received a $15 million Safe Streets Grant. So, we will be getting $15 million towards the $125 million project, which will totally remake the San Pablo Avenue corridor from Oakland City Center to the Contra Costa border. The Berkeley and Albany councils have opted only for pedestrian enhancements and bus lane improvements with parallel bike routes. Emeryville and Oakland have opted for a total complete street redesign, which prioritizes multimodal transit, bus rapid transit, pedestrian enhancements, and bike-protected lanes. But that $15 million is one of the three largest safe streets.
Uh, but that fifteen million dollars is one of the three largest uh, Safe Streets Grants that was awarded in the state of California in round one of funding. Um, and so uh, with that support of the Commission, I will be leading a second uh, uh, second group of people to Washington DC in June on behalf of the Commission to um, pursue the second round of funding that we're going to go after in the infrastructure, um, the, I'm sorry, the Inflation Reduction Act related to climate funding on transportation projects. So that's my report on meetings attended. Are there any city manager report items this evening, Mr. Budenhagen?
Uh, I have a few, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, uh, I want to welcome, we have two new department heads, uh, talented, hardworking and dedicated people who are very happy to join us here in Emeryville. Part of the reason for that is the reputation of the city council and of the city, uh, that matters. Lawrence Chu is our new Finance Director. He's first meeting, sitting back there, welcome. Uh, and Lily Bell Nakamura is our uh, HR Director. She started Thursday, um, had an already approved vacation and will be back on Monday, so we're thrilled to have them, two very important positions. Second, the Capital Improvements Project Survey launched today. Um, so uh, we're seeking the public's input on the draft list of projects that um, you can find on the website at emeryville.org/cip. That survey will be open through March, um, and builds on the public uh, feedback that staff has received over nine different council and community advisory uh, meetings. Third, I am starting the, restarting the Coffee with the City Manager. So, uh, I just had my one month anniversary here and I'm very much looking forward to getting out and meeting more people who live in Emeryville and talking with you and hearing what you have to say. So, uh, would be delighted if you would join me on March sixteenth at nine o'clock here in the Garden Link down below. So, starting that off. Fourth, the Davenport Park Ribbon Cutting is March third um, at four o'clock and people are invited to, to come out to that. That park has been closed for over a year and thanks to the leadership of the mayor and council and staff, it's going to be reopened. And then the last thing is just to save the date for the Healthy Family Festival and Egg Hunt, which will be Saturday, April eighth from ten to one at ECCO. Uh, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions on the city manager's report? Okay, seeing none. Ex parte communications, members, please take a look at the agenda, including items ten through twelve. If there's an item for which you've had an ex parte communication and you'd like to report it this evening, I'll call on members to acknowledge those for the record. I'll start with Member Mora. Do you have any ex parte communications to report?
Uh, no ex parte, but I do have a abstention.
A recusal?
A recusal, yes.
Like to report that, please?
Uh, yes, this is for um, agenda item eleven point one, the public hearing due to the proximity of my residence.
Okay, and I believe for the record, he needs to state his address. Is that correct? Please, that's why we used to do it at least.
Six-four-six-six Hollis Street.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Member Pryforce, do you have any ex parte communications?
Am I, uh, since, yeah, are we close?
Yeah, I think you're even closer.
Okay, yeah, so that, yeah, if that's the case, then I, I'd like to recuse myself as well.
I just.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, that's the city attorney.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If I can just address that, so the rule only applies if you actually own residential property.
Okay.
So if you do not, then you don't have.
Sorry, okay. Yeah, yeah, so no, yeah, so no ex parte communication. Yeah, I'm not, I don't own, yeah, so.
Right, so you don't have a recusal, but do you, did you speak to anybody who's an applicant on any of the items?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, Member Carr? I don't think, I doubt it because nobody knew you were gonna be here, so. Okay, and Vice Mayor Welch?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I have no ex parte communications to report either. That will bring us to public comment for the consent calendar and items not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment on either of those has two minutes to do so. Please recognize uh, the speaker for two minutes. Good evening.
Okay, um, you're gonna be, I have to leave because of family obligations, but you're gonna be talking about action item two, twelve point one, fifty million dollar bond, uh, but general obligation bonds that are gonna be sold for the, that's for the Measure C Affordable Housing Bond that we voted on a couple of years ago, night, twenty eighteen, I believe. So, ha- after having thoroughly trashed Mayor John Bouters here earlier tonight and he had it coming, uh, I'll, I'll play, I'll be fair. And I'd like to praise Mayor Bouters to, uh, tonight for all his hard work he did to get Measure C passed, the fifty million dollar general obligation bond that uh, we voted on. Now, it was a really heavy lift and it took a lot of leadership skills and also commitment to affordable housing. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I majorly disagree with Mr. Bouters about many things, but I agree with him on this and I have to, it can't be denied that he's very effective, uh, really good to have on our side and on our, on our council when it comes to stuff like this. This, and, and with specificity to the Measure C, it's kudos to, to Mayor Bouters of all the, all the work he did to get this past the finish line and I know it's a lot of work and, uh, you know, you're not well paid for that. And uh, we are all beneficiaries of that, so I'm gonna continue to disagree strenuously with Mayor Bouters and, and others of you. Uh, but when I see you doing something extraordinarily good like this, I'll, I'll come up and say something, so good, good job, Mayor Bouters.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda or the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Members, are there any items that you would like to pull for discussion or uh, ask questions about before we vote? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve items ten point one through ten point seven inclusive. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, thank you. Members, item eleven is, item eleven point one is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance for the Union Pacific Railroad grade crossings at sixty-seventh, sixty-sixth and sixty-fifth streets for a seven-day consecutive period on dates to be determined between February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three to the City of Emeryville and Bay Cities paving and grading in the Union Pacific Railroad. This time, um, would you like to restate your recusal and leave the dais?
Uh, yes, I'm recused from this item.
You can go sit in the audience. Staff, is there a presentation on this item tonight? Uh, let me actually ask members, members, did you all read the staff report? I know you have not. Um, uh, other members, have you read the staff report on this item and familiar with the item? No? Okay.
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a staff presentation, please?
I, I promoted uh, Ryan. Is that who you wanted to give the presentation? Okay, and I'll start the slide presentation.
Good evening, Ryan.
Thanks, April. Good evening, uh, Honorable City Council. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, I am Ryan O'Connell, Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department, uh, here to give this presentation on this item. Um, we are having a public hearing for a noise waiver for a seven-day uh, consecutive work window occurring on dates between February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And there's a slight typo here in the presentation, but it will be until November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three to avoid the holidays um, to the City of Emeryville, Bay Cities Paving and Grading and the Union Pacific Railroad Corporation for work related to track and grade crossing improvements as part of the TSEP Quiet Zone Safety Engineering Measures Project. Next slide. The location of this work for the project, uh, which uh, started uh, last June, twenty-twenty-two, um, is on, along Shellmount Street at the Union Pacific Railroad crossings at sixty-fifth Street, sixty-sixth and sixty-seventh. Next slide. So, our request tonight is a period of seven consecutive calendar days of night work between the hours of six PM and seven AM and twenty-four hour weekend work beginning on a date to be determined between February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three and November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three to construct railroad safety improvements at sixty-fifth Street, sixty-sixth Street and sixty-seventh Street grade crossings. Uh, the likely equipment to be used uh, during the nighttime will be air compressors, heavy equipment, jackhammer and supplemental lighting. Um, there would be approximately ten to twenty employees on site uh, as, as the work is being done. Next slide. So, the reason for this request is uh, it's to ensure safe and timely construction of the improvements. There are fifty-five to sixty trains during the day, um, and we'd like to avoid those uh, daytime train hours. And the track work on the Union Pacific Railroad alignment within the railroad right-of-way at sixty-sixth, sixty-sixth and sixty-seventh can only occur during the nighttime weekends when these trains run less frequently. Next slide. So, just to show a quick uh, schematic of the sixty-fifth Street track improvements, we are gonna be reconstructing all of the three track panels at the crossing, uh, reconstructing curb ramps, sidewalks and installing a, a quad gate system along with some signal improvements at the crossing. Next slide. Again, at sixty-seventh, we will be installing a quad gate system along with signal improvements and sidewalk and curb ramp improvements. Next slide. So, for notification, we've mailed notification to property owners and site addresses within three hundred feet of the project site. Um, this has occurred and we've also done a legal advertisement in the Oakland Tribune, Tribune. Uh, next slide. Um, so for discussion, it's not feasible for Union Pacific Railroad to reduce daytime rail operations to enable day track work. Therefore, the only work windows for track work to occur on this alignment is at night and on the weekend when the trains run less frequently. Next slide. So, staff recommends approval of the subject uh, to the conditions of approval outlined in the resolution. And I can uh, list those out if uh, council desires.
Thank you, Ryan. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time, time is eight fifty-one. I called to order the public hearing. A member of the public who wishes to comment in the public hearing has three minutes to do so. Here you hear you all who wish to speak, come now. Do we have anybody who's submitted a written comment card in advance for this hearing?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I have no hands raised online and I have no people at the public podium. Madam Clerk, the time is eight fifty-one. The public hearing is closed for comment. We'll now turn to members for discussion. Member Pryforce?
Oh, yeah, so um, yeah, I remember um, reading through the report. Sorry, my brain went staff report. It was about the report about the new staff members that the city manager talked, yeah, sorry, sorry about that. Um, so one of the issues um, uh, is that um, our mail theft has been um, uh, pretty high, uh, particularly at the Courtyard sixty-fifth, which is one of the sites near uh, where this development is happening. Um, and uh, so a lot of members uh, didn't receive the notices. And I don't know if there's a way for us to uh, sort of address that, um, that because of disruption of the mail and then the advertising was in the Oakland Tribune, which is not really a, a thing in Emeryville. And so, if there's a way that we can better communicate um, the, the, you know, the whole thing with the noise. Cause I, cause I recall having to go through this information and having to share that amongst uh, my mailing list of, of residents at, at Courtyard sixty-fifth. So, uh, that's um, uh, my uh, feedback from this.
Mr. O'Connell, when the date is selected by the railroad and they have the clearance, will we be able to renotice the community?
You know, it's, it's tough to tell. Um, we've been struggling with actually even getting a date on the calendar with them. Um, I, I think at best, we might have a thirty-day notice, so if we did have a thirty-day notice, um, we, we, we would be able to mail it. Um, but there's a possibility that, hey, they're ready to go in two weeks, you know, and, and they scheduled a time in March. Um, but I, I think we can do our best to, at, at the very least, do some Twitter blasts, um, you know, put it up on the city website and then do some focus mailers. So, it takes about, you know, three days for us to produce mailer um, and send it out to the community. So, I think we can probably knock that out.
If we can ask that it, we utilize the city blast, the news flash service and that council members be provided the date, once we know what the date is, so that that can be shared with HOAs and apartment associations, is that something that staff can commit to doing? Mr. Budenhagen?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other members who wish to comment on this item? Vice Mayor Welch?
I really want this project to keep moving forward. It's a very high priority. Um, previously, we've had folks come and comment here about the disruption that the train horn um, and the way it impacts their, some of their family members' sleep patterns. So, I want to make sure that this project stays um, on schedule as much as possible. And I know it, it is a fact they cannot control or slow down the train traffic during the day. It's just a fact that it's slower at night, so I understand and I'm not an owner, but live around the corner. And I would prefer to deal with some jackhammering for a little bit to make sure that the project moves forward and we're able to complete it because it is very much a high priority project for the neighborhood.
Others who wish to comment? I have comments. So, this project was introduced to the Capital Improvement Plan in two thousand eighteen and I want to give special recognition to Amber Evans and Ryan O'Connell, who have uh, helped this project from the beginning and especially Ryan O'Connell for his masterful work at the engineering level um, in helping us design a project. This project was awarded State CTC funding um, through a competitive application process through SB one grant funding in twenty eighteen. Um, I want to thank the residents of the Christie Core Neighborhood, who uh, I conducted a series of meetings with in January of twenty eighteen to secure close to twelve hundred resident signatures um, in support of this project, which made it a score so highly uh, for this funding. Uh, we experienced in the last, I would say, four to six years, uh, significant amount of early education about how the railroad works, um, both with the South Bayfront Bridge and then also with this project. Uh, the railroad's tactic is to delay and then demand things, to increase the price on things without notice, to change order of things. Um, I deal with them at the Transportation Commission in the county on the Seventh Street Grade Separation Project at the port. Um, we have litigated with them repeatedly. They are a very, very difficult and intractable agency to work with. This is, as was mentioned by Vice Mayor Welch, an extremely important livability project. Um, noise from trains proximate to residential areas such as um, the Avalon or the Courtyards at sixty-fifth. Um, residents in loud neighborhood areas, um, children in particular have their sleep rhythms disrupted um, by loud noises and it disproportionately affects children of color. It also um, creates learning challenges for children who have sleep disruption and can't go and function at school the same way because their sleep is consistently disrupted by either bright lights or noises. So, this is not a, um, this is not anything more than two things. One, a safety improvement project for the crossings in these neighborhoods, but two, a livability project that residents have long wanted. Um, for seven days to have the, these grade crossings closed for seven-day period to allow for the necessary on-track construction work that needs to be done to deliver this project now to the city after uh, several years of trying to get there, um, to me is, is a reasonable thing to, to give up. Um, and I'm not somebody who quickly gives up noise waivers. Um, so, um, I'm gonna be supporting this request this evening and just asking staff that when we do have visibility to that window of time, and I know how unreasonable they are giving that at times, um, that staff uh, help inform the community and give council members information so that we can, um, we can move this forward. If there's no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution in item eleven point one.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion by the mayor and seconded by Vice Mayor Welch. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora? Oh, is, is absent, is recused from this item. Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, thank you, staff, and thank you, the Public Works Department in particular, for your work on this. Okay, you're welcome to come back up. We'll move to items in the action items section. We have a few items left. Item twelve point one is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the issuance and sale of up to fifty million dollars of the city's twenty-twenty-three general obligation bonds and authorizing actions related thereto. Good evening and welcome to your first council presentation.
This is my first council presentation. Good evening, Mayor and the members of the council. My name is Lawrence Chu. I'm the new Finance Director. Tonight, I'm excited to present, tonight, I'm excited to present this item together with two consultants, Melissa Sheikh and David Brassley from KMM Public Finance. I'll give a brief background on the bond financing and KMM will give you an overview of the proposed financing structure. Okay, uh, slide number one, please. Okay, here's the background of the bond financing. In June, in June two thousand eighteen, the voter approved Measure C, which authorized the city to issue fifteen million general obligation bonds to finance affordable housing for low-income residents. Then in March twenty twenty-one, the city council adopted Affordable Housing Bond Administration and Expenditure Plan, denial the guidelines for expenditure of the bonds. In November last year, the city council approved a contract with KMM Public Finance to serve as municipal advisor, to develop the structure of bond financing and to bring the bonds to the market. At this point, we have the financing team in place and we are ready to issue- team in place, and we are ready to issue the bonds. Now I turn over to Melissa Shick of KNM to present the bond financing structure. Next slide, please. Okay, we have a speaker from KNM Public Finance.
Yes, good evening, council. This is Melissa Shick, and I'm joined by my colleague, David Brodsky, also of KNM Public Finance. David and myself had the good fortune of working with the city in 2018 and really assisting with the voter approval process for the GEO authorization. So we are pleased to be with you today, seeking your approval of the issuance of the bonds that you will use voter approval for. The recommendation in the bond, in the documents before you suggests a single issuance of up to the entire authorized amount of $50 million. It is expected that the GEO bonds will be issued on a taxable basis, given the Measure C projects do not fully qualify as governmental use projects, and therefore will not carry the tax exemption restrictions that most municipal bonds carry. Because of this, because of the taxable nature of the bonds, the city has the ability to issue all of the authorization at once, and then earn on the proceeds of the $50 million issued over the term of the expenditure period, which currently staff estimates being an eight-year period. Based on a reasonable expectation of earnings on the bond proceeds, it's anticipated that the city could generate up to an additional four and a half million of project funds to be eligible for Measure C project, other project leases. The anticipated bond repayment term would be 25 years, and the repayment structure would be level annual. Staff recommends the issuance of the bond be a competitive sale, and that means that an underwriter would be aborted on the day of sale based on the lowest true interest cost provided on the bonds. The city hasn't assembled a financing team, which consists of KNM Public Finance as your municipal advisor, but we're also joined by Special Counsel Hatton Timick, and the Bank of New York Mellon will also serve as the paying agent on the bonds. Next slide. We wanted to provide counsel with just a context of the current interest rate environment, given that the interest rates are, is a frequent, frequent topic of discussion, both nationally and globally. Certainly, we've seen interest rates trend upward over the course of 2023, and currently, rates are kind of in and around the 20-year average. And so we're looking at a 30-year taxable treasury rate of approximately 3.65% and a 10-year treasury rate of approximately Next slide. So before the approval of any bond issuance, the State of California Government Code requires that staff reports to the governing body certain good, good faith estimates of the bond transaction, and that includes an estimate for the true interest cost on the bonds, an estimate of the finance charges associated for issuing the bonds. So that means fees paid to third parties helping with the sale of the bonds, as well as to the underwriter who may purchase your bonds. And then also estimates for bond proceeds to be received by the city for the issuance of the bonds, which will be just under the fully authorized amount of $50 million, which is net of the estimated, estimated finance charges of the bonds of $615,000. And in aggregate, total payments on the bonds over the 25-year term, assuming that a true interest cost just above 6%, equates to an approximately just over $100 million of both principal and interest over the term of the bond. Next slide. The general obligation bonds went to the voters, and the voters approved that the city levy taxes for the repayment of the bonds. So the proposed issuance of bonds will not come from the city's general fund, but will be repaid by taxes levied on the city's tax base. And in this chart, we chart the estimated annual debt payments over the term of the bonds for 25 years, which is approximately $400 or $4 million annually, and then the estimated tax rate that would need to be levied per $100,000 of assessed valuation to support the repayment annually on the bonds. Because the city's tax base has grown tremendously since the June 2018 election to the fiscal '23 current assessed valuation, we approximate that the average annual tax rate per $100,000 of assessed valuation to be $42.73 versus what was put forth before the voters in 2018, which was a higher estimate of $49.12. So all this to say is, as the city's tax base grows and expands, the, the tax rate per $100,000 of assessed valuation will decline. Next slide. So the documents before your approval today consist of this bond resolution and its associated attachments, which is the paying agent agreement, and that's the agreement that creates legal structure and security for the bonds, including the specifics of the payment deeds and maturities, and directs your paying agent to make timely payments of principal and interest to bondholders. The third, the second attachment to the resolution is a continuing disclosure certificate, and that certificate is the city's promise to disclose timely to its bondholders annually of any material events related to the city's finances. Next slide. So the timeline and next steps were before you today for your approval of the authorization to issue up to $50 million of GEO bonds. We expect to return to the council in early April for council's approval of the preliminary official statement that will help market and sell the bonds in the public municipal bond market. At that time, we'll provide updated estimates for the cost and true interest cost on the bonds, and we will establish sale parameters with your approval. We would expect to engage the rating agencies in April, and then ultimately be in a position to price the bonds in late April, and then close on the bonds in the middle of May, and at that time, proceeds would be available for Measure C projects. And then with that, I'll turn it back to Lawrence in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I want to check with the council. Do you have any question related to the $50 million general obligation bonds?
Okay, before we do that, is there anything? I see we're on slide eight. Are there other presentation items? Did we have other slides to present to council?
Slide number eight is just for the information of the cost of insurance detail. Move to the final, final slide.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is, before we take questions, we'll take public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you. You can have a seat just for a half second, probably. Is there any members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.1 related to the issuance of $50 million in affordable housing bonds? And did we receive any written comments online?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is closed. Well, thank you for the presentation. We'll turn to questions or discussion. Are there members who have questions or wish to discuss? I just want to thank you and the finance team and the city manager's office for, and also forthcoming, our consultants and city attorney for moving forward with this. This is an extremely reasonable issuance strategy. I think a single issuance is key. I think the fact that we can make this issuance and receive a return of over $4 million on it, which will further the goals of the city potentially with the investment strategy that we have. I think that the work we've done to improve and increase housing over the last few years is increased the base value of actuarial value for the city, which has made the pricing of this bond extremely reasonable to residents compared to what we estimated when we put this out on the ballot in 2018. And I think that over the repayment period of the bonds, it's going to only further be dispersed among the people who live and work in the community. So I'm just grateful that we're at this point. Is there anybody who wishes to add comments to this? If not, is there a motion on the item? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for item 12.1.
I will second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch to approve the resolution for item 12.1. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you, and look forward to hearing back from you and the consultants in April on the timeline for the POS issuance. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa and David. Have a lovely evening. We're on to item 12.2, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the city's reserve policies.
Now, it's a very short, one-page PowerPoint presentation to summarize the city reserve policy.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. I'm presenting the revised reserve policy for the, for council consideration. The current reserve policy was approved by the council in 2016 and addressed only the economic uncertainty reserve and the undecided general fund reserve. First of all, staff recommend changing the title of reserve policy to expenditure and reserve policy. The table you see here summarizes the reserve policy and the proposed changes. We first look at the economic uncertainty reserve. The economic uncertainty reserve has a target balance of 50% of general fund expenditure. No changes is proposed at this time. Currently, the reserve has a balance of $25 million, or 48% of the general fund expenditure. So in March next month, finance will present a staff report requesting the city council to transfer one million from the undecided general fund reserve in order to reach the target reserve level of 50%. The second reserve we will look at is the disaster reserve, which has a balance of three million. Currently, the disaster reserve does not include description, description of the use of the fund. And yet it's recommended disaster reserve maintain a target reserve of five million, and also add the description on the use of the fund. The next reserve we will look at is the merger F fund, which has a current balance of four million. In March 2020, the voter approved merger F ballot merger to increase the sales test by one quarter cent to improve the quality of knife in Amityville and to support Amityville Child Development Center. It is recommended that the merger F fund maintained a target reserve of four million, which is used to support the operation of Child Development Center. Any funds in excess of four million may be expanded in the priority outline in the reserve policy. And finally, we'll look at the merger O funds. This is a new reference source for the city. So right now is, we don't have a current balance. In November 2022, the voter approved merger O, which adjusts the real property transfer test, and the city will receive the first allotment of the merger O fund in around April this year. It is recommended the merger O funds maintained a target reserve of one million to fund the one-time unbudgeted critical need of the city. And after funding the critical need of the city, 50% of the remaining balance will be used to fund the capital improvement plan, and the remaining 50% of the fund balance will be used to fund pension and other post-employment benefit unfund liability. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.2 related to expenditure and reserve policies? Did we receive any comments online or in advance?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, public comment is closed. Is there discussion or comments from members? If not, is there a motion?
I move the resolution.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Welch and a second from Member Mora to approve this item. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Lawrence, for your time.
Thank you.
Very prudent set of budget policies. Item 12.3 is consideration of a travel authorization for Councilmember Pryforce and the League of California Cities Caucus memberships. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're presenting a travel authorization for Councilmember Pryforce this evening that he asked us to put together regarding a conference that he'd like to attend. We've also put forward some League of California Cities Caucus memberships that Councilmember Pryforce was interested in attaining membership to, to offer it to the other members of the city council.
Okay, and since this is your request, Member Pryforce, you have the floor.
So the, the CalCities caucuses were caucuses that I would like to join and participate. And the other training was recommended by the CalCities as training for new council members. Yeah. Yeah, so I also would recommend that any council member who would like to participate in the training also join me.
And the training is located where and what are the costs?
In San Diego, and I'm not sure what the total costs are, Madam Clerk.
The registration is really the only thing that we know definitively. It's $245. The hotel would depend on what's available at this point after we got the travel authorization. I looked at it. It's probably about $250 per night. And then Councilmember Pryforce's travel. He's, he had informed me that he was planning on driving, so it'd be the travel down there.
Okay, we'll take public comment first. And members of the public who wish to comment on this item have two minutes to do so. Do we receive any written comments in advance of this meeting?
No, we did not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion. Members, would you like to discuss? Member Mora?
One question I had, kind of a general question about travel of this sort. It seems, would it be worthwhile or worth considering to have some type of policy or at least dollar amount? So say we are, if the budget is $8,000 for the entire city council for a year, So say we are, if the budget is $8,000 for the entire city council for a year, that any given member has discretion over a fifth of that, so $1,600, and then they don't need to bring items like this before the council. That's just one idea that popped into my head, but I'd like to hear how this has been handled in the past.
Sure, I'm probably the only person who, I'm looking over here, Charlie Bryant may be the only other person in the room. Pedro, okay, there's a few of us. So historically, this amount of money that's in the budget is larger than it used to be. Several years ago, it was only $3,000 and I'm not sure when it was changed to 8,000, probably in the last year or two, but it was generally 3,000 was the total amount. And the general practice was that a newly elected person, the city always paid to send them to the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento at the beginning of the year for that orientation and training, that the mayor was sent to the US Mayor's Conference, and that whoever was the League of Cities representative for the council, which I believe is Member Pryforce, gets to go to the conference that's in the fall in Southern California to represent us at the League of Cities vote. Every other conference or item is generally paid for out of a person's campaign account. The city does not have a, generally have a budget for or bankroll attendance at meetings. And typically, if a member wishes to attend a meeting, they, they bring that to us in advance of registering for it and we can have a discussion about it. But I will just recall, and Member Welch may have personal insight on this, because I, I never did the League of Cities, I did the first-year orientation when I was elected, but I never did the caucuses or whatever, so I'm not sure how the the registration or the cost is for that. What was the cost for each caucus?
Most of them are $100, there is one that is $50, the LGBTQ caucus is $50, the others are...
The gays were so cheap over here. Just, I'm allowed, I'm allowed to say that once in a while. We're, well, looking at it, you know, I think it's reasonable to support a member being part of a caucus. I don't know how I feel personally about putting people in all caucuses at the League of Cities, because I only think there's five or six caucuses in the League of Cities. But I'm happy to support registering an interested member in a caucus. I traveled this past year for probably three or four events where I was invited to conferences for trainings and speaking, and the typical practice for small city elected officials is that you use the funds in your campaign account or you do grassroots donations to fund your attendance at these. So that has been the practice to the question. Others?
When it comes to, well, my, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You're right.
When it comes to conferences really outside of the League of Cities, isn't it also in the current policy, one would be invited as a representative of the city specifically? So if we wanted to choose to do ongoing professional development, that would be something that we're electing to do, therefore, that's something that you would pay for out of your office holder account.
That is, that has been the practice to Member Mora's question, the practice has been that if you wish to have training outside of the, the League of Cities training, the Mayor's Conference and the League of Cities Conference, the practice has been that you attend that on your own cost and time as training, we don't pay to train council members per se. The, yeah, I think that answers your question, correct? But to differentiate, if we appoint someone to a regional border body and in the capacity of that regional border body, they receive a request that says, you know, so I can think of one such example, Member Martinez, I believe in the past, was invited to something as Chair of East Bay Community Energy, and I believe
Right.
East Bay Community Energy paid the cost of her attending that because she was invited in that capacity. If we received a letter saying, we're looking to have a panel of elected representatives here and in your capacity as that, this is the invitation, we would then take it up as a potential city business item, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you wish to speak? Member Carr?
I'm wondering if some of these trainings are available by Zoom for those of us who would prefer not to travel.
Well, I don't know anything about this training, are these available by Zoom?
From my, from my understanding, no, this training was recommended by CalCities, they actually discounted it by half, I believe it was $500 and they discounted it to about $250.
Okay, others with questions or comments? Member Pryforce, I would be happy to make a motion to have the city pay for your registration and all of the caucuses that you've sought membership in, if you're amenable to that with the understanding that for elective trainings and elective conferences that members attend, members have traditionally paid from their campaign account, that's been our practice. Are you supportive of that?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, further discussion, Member Mora, you're off mic, go ahead.
Just to clarify, are you, are we proposing to pay for the caucus registration but not for the travel expenses?
Yes.
I would support that.
Yes. Ms. Richardson?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I'm, I'm, so the caucuses are separate from the...
Yes, I'm not paying for the travel or the, or the thing, my motion would be to pay the 100 and the $50 registrations for League of City caucuses, memberships.
Wonderful, that's what I understood, okay, thank you so much.
So I'll make a motion to approve Councilmember Pryforce's request to have the city pay for the cost of membership in, is it four or five, Madam Clerk?
It's four.
In four League of City caucuses as related in the staff report.
I second.
Okay, is there further discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters.
Aye, thank you. Item 13 is department head reports, do we have any department heads that wish to report this evening on an item in their department? Everyone's like, no, sir. Not tonight, Mayor. Okay, when I check over there, I'm looking at you, Rebecca, no, she's like, hell, no. Okay, future agenda item requests from council members, are there any members here who have a future agenda item request? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 9:27, this meeting is adjourned, everybody have a lovely evening and a good weekend, be kind to one another.